Please be seated. I would like to welcome everyone here this evening to this meeting of Newcastle City Council. Item one is apologies.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We have apologies from councillors Ahard, Breeky, Burke, Gallagher, Kane, Leggett, Taylor, Todd and Heinemash.
Thank you. I am to his minutes. Does council agree the minutes of the meeting of council held on the 4th of March 2015? Thank you. I want to take the opportunity to remind members about an information session being held tomorrow at 12 noon here in the council chamber. At the session you will hear information on universal credit which will be introduced in Newcastle on the 27th of April 2015 for single people who would previously have been eligible to make a new claim for the Jobseekers Allowance, the JSA. This is part of a national rollout of universal credit for new claimants claiming applying for JSA taking place between February 2015 and March 2016 in all job centres and local authorities. A session was held earlier today and I hope that more members can attend tomorrow. Members will want to join me in watching Friday night's BBC One Inside Out programme. The programme features the Geordie School Symphony. The programme highlights the musical talent of young people in the inner west end of the city and features their concert at the Sage. It's really great that local talent is being recognised and widely shared across the region. Will members please note that the pre-election period for parliamentary and local elections on the 7th of May 2015 will start tomorrow, the 27th of March? As this is the last council meeting before the election, I would like to take the opportunity to address the members who are standing down at the election, likely this month, retiring or otherwise. And thank you for your public service and hard work on behalf of residents of Newcastle. As councillor McCarthy is arriving late, it is proposed that we take item six after item nine. The Cabinet member report is disagreed. Thank you. Petitions, we have received one petition for this meeting. I would invite councillor Salinas to present a petition regarding changes to the night time noise service. Councillor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is a petition from 200 people so far, exactly 200. The numbers are continuing to be, to increase. It says, "We, the undersigned residents of Newcastle upon Tyne, are concerned that Newcastle City Council has decided to withdraw the night time noise service and replace it with a call taking service with officers only visiting premises during working hours. We believe that as a result of legal and practical issues, this will greatly reduce the effectiveness of what has long been an effective, efficient, reassuring and popular service for residents suffering from early hours parties and other night noise. We call on the council to explore other options which will allow the night time call out team to be retained."
Thank you. Does council agree to refer the petition to the relevant cabinet member and director? Item five, local plan, adoption of planning for the future core strategy and urban core plan. I would like to call on councillor Bell to move the report and councillor Forbes the second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I draw attention first to agenda item five, as you've stated, and that's the addendum to the plan which should be read with the proposal tonight? Today marks an important milestone for the council, as I propose the adoption of the planning for the future core strategy and urban core plan for Gateshead, Newcastle. The adoption of this plan will be a major step forward for the city and a significant achievement for the council. The plan is a blueprint for the future and it shows where and how tens of thousands of new jobs and homes will be developed across Newcastle Gateshead, fulfilling the needs of a growing population and growing economy. We will be one of the first urban areas outside London to develop a joint plan, giving developers and investors the certainty that we are open for business and the confidence to invest, while striking the right balance by securing the local environment for our residents. Many will know now that every local authority has a statutory duty to prepare a local plan. The first stage of preparing Newcastle's local plan is the adoption of the core strategy and urban core plan. We started this journey back in 2009, when we decided to work with Gateshead Council to prepare a shared planning framework. Planning, like many things, doesn't stop at neighbours' boundaries. Roads continue, people commute and people use services and facilities elsewhere. With our vision to develop a plan that would address cross boundary issues and make sure that by 2030, the city would be a more prosperous, attractive and sustainable place to live and work. Throughout the preparation of the plan, listening to our community's needs has been paramount. We undertook several, seven individual rounds of consultation. The planning inspector himself has commended us for the comprehensive public consultation we carried out. We have gone a long way beyond what is required of the councils because when we say let's talk, we mean it. We have listened to the view of our communities and where possible, we have taken these on board. Our communities raised concerns about the number of homes to be built on the green belt and we subsequently revised the plan. The council is also investing £25 million to bring forward remediation work on Brownfield sites and accelerate development in those areas. The majority of the development will take place in the existing urban area, that's 71%, Lord Mayor. We also looked again at our employment land and reallocated surplus sites such as Newburn. This allowed us to reduce the number of homes in the green belt from 8,700 to 6,000. I personally thank those who got involved in our consultation and had their say. The voice of the local people has made this plan stronger and we will work closely with the public as delivery of plan unfolds for the coming years. In developing the plan, we acknowledged that it must be based on the most up to date and robust evidence available to meet the legal and planning requirements and indeed were praised for our methodical interpretation of this by the inspector. The inspector concluded his examination of the plan 24th of February this year with submission of his report and found the plan to be sound and legally compliant, subject to a few modifications. Let's be clear, this is an important moment. This plan is our strategic vision for how the city will deliver jobs and housing for the future. And it is great news for Newcastle and the council. The plan will make sure that the council has policies to deliver its ambitions and the development of a working city with decent neighbourhoods for current and future generations, helping tackle inequalities that currently exist and making sure our council is fit for purpose. It will guide development in a planned and controlled way and ensure that our vital economic success by optimising the opportunities for homes and jobs. The plan will achieve this by supporting the growth of approximately 14,000 additional jobs in Newcastle, including new technologies such as offshore engineering and life sciences, in the creative and digital economy through growth of businesses and financial services and in retail expansion. This also supports our ambitions to create opportunities for business expansions at key sites, many of which are now underway. We are prioritising the urban core as a location for major office space, retail, higher and further education, leisure, culture and tourism, which will strengthen Newcastle's position as a regional capital and the driver of the North East economy. Meeting our local housing needs by focusing on a majority, 71% of new homes in the existing urban area and by creating new communities in the north and the west. The development of these communities was supported by a range of new and existing services and infrastructure to ensure their sustainability and connectivity. When the plan is adopted by full council, it will provide Newcastle with a planning framework that will manage the development to secure our community's future. Following adoption of the plan, the pre-application process and consultation by developers will get underway in earnest. The developers have been eagerly awaiting the approval so they can progress their proposals. Members will and may have already been contacted by interested parties and as they begin their consultations. Obviously, the pre-election period starts tomorrow, the 27th, and continues until 10 pm on the 7th of May. If members need clarification on what they can do during this period, then they should seek advice from the officers. That is said, there is no doubt the plan helps provide clarity and certainty for potential investors and developers to deliver jobs and homes and gives us competitive advantage in attracting investors who want to know what is possible. By 2030, the plan will support the growth of 14,000 jobs and deliver 21,000 homes in Newcastle. With supporting infrastructure needed to match our ambitions, we'll have new communities where people want to live at a price they can afford. This is hugely important glimpse of what tomorrow's world will bring for everyone in Newcastle. I am proud that we have gotten to this point and I'm excited to see what the future holds. Our plan helps us achieve our ambitions and demonstrates that Newcastle is capable of sheer in its future and plan for success. I ask the council to approve the adoption of the plan, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your comments.
Councillor Forbes?
Lord Mayor, I second the plan and reserve the right to speak.
We've got quite a few names down here who wish to speak, so I intend relaxing the rules a little and it's an important item. So I'll call on councillor Lower.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, as somebody who's sat through the planning inquiry alongside the officers, I would like to start by actually congratulating Nicola Woodhead and Harvey Emms for the case they presented for the city. I was one of the two elected representatives who made comments to the inspector along with community groups and parish councils and it was apparent that the priority for developers is units while ours should be communities. I acknowledge the city needs to grow, however, I and my ward colleagues have probably more experience than many of new build, as we represent Newcastle Great Park, where there is one oversubscribed school, one exit and entrance to the whole park including Sage, no shops and very little community space that's been developed yet. And we are now almost 15, 20 years into the project. Everyone knows the special feeling when you move to your new home and the developers have been very good at delivering these homes. But we need to ensure we have a comprehensive plan which is about more than houses, it's about building communities, but even more importantly, preserving and protecting existing communities. I do have a number of specific concerns. One is that the annual house building figures have been revised by the DCLG, which says that we have predicted growth of 25% lower than what was calculated on the plan. The basis was compiled on the 2011 household estimate for the one core strategy up to 2036. Those figures have now changed and the census data for 2012 shows that the figures have been revised downward and instead of 1,051 houses a year, we could need only 770. This is based on an estimated 16.3% total household growth over the next 25 years. This evidence from the DCLG base is hugely significant. It shows Newcastle's anticipated housing requirement is likely to be smaller than the council predicts. The council is planning for around 280 more houses a year than necessary and over 25 years, this could equate to over 7,000 houses being built unnecessarily. In turn, this could mean that whole swath of the green belt in the north west of the city would be sacrificed for houses that wouldn't be needed. I acknowledge that house builders almost certainly won't build if all of these demand, if all the demand doesn't materialise. But I am concerned that decisions taken now to designate greenfield land for long term development will have very significant consequences for local communities in the north west of Newcastle, including Kingston Park and Dinnington in my ward as many more potential sites. The other problem is, as we've seen in the Great Park, if the developers do start to build and houses don't sell, you end up with estates which take a long time to build out with empty plots waiting to be sold next to people who are living in houses and it just becomes a mess because they won't complete roads or pavements until they move off the site. But what's missing from this plan is detail of the infrastructure, a clear school places policy, a transport policy, shopping, leisure. Lord Mayor, I cannot agree to this plan being adopted without the detail being in place to show how we want the city to develop and that this is not a free for all which puts developers in the driving seat. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Beecham?
I confess I still sense a deja vu once we discuss this plan because 22 or 23 years ago, I recall councillor Steesenger in a previous political incarnation and I proposing and moving the unit development plan. And that was greeted with exactly the same degree of scepticism and lack of confidence in the city's future from the Liberal Democrats as we appear to hear tonight. We were told that we shouldn't be planning for growth at all, we should be going for a planned reduction of population. And 12 or 13 years ago, we had the same response to the going for growth proposals which under the Liberal Democrat administration which subsequently came over, took over, became going for sloth as we have only recently, for example, seen the housing development, long awaited housing development proceeding in Scotland. Clearly, this is not just about building houses, but we do need to be optimistic about the city's population. We do need to encourage people to stay in the city and we do need to recognise there is a significant pent up housing need in this city. We have many people on the waiting list. We don't have an adequate stock of social housing, for example, in particular, that's available, let alone of a kind which other people would aspire to have. And I have to say that it always strikes me as peculiar that the most vocal opponents to new build are the people who are living in houses which were themselves built on what was green land some time ago. And I recall in particular one day canvassing an award on the outskirts of the city, the northern outskirts of the city, and being told by a woman occupying a recently built house that it would be terrible to have social housing built in the vicinity. I nearly nominated myself for the Nobel Prize for self restraint as a result of my very moderate response. But I'm afraid that attitude is somewhat common and it's really quite ironic that you canvass on those estates which 10, 15, 20 years ago worked there, they were on green fields, people are on them now, don't want anybody else to have a similar opportunity. Now, that's not everybody, of course it's not everybody, but it's remarkable how common that that approach is. It's not an adequate response to the needs of this city. This plan lays the foundations for that and I very much hope we can adopt it and in conjunction with our colleagues in Gateshead ensure that Newcastle and Gateshead together with the other parts of Tyneside actually have plans in place to sustain a growing economy and a growing population.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've had some knowledge of plan development both here and in several other authorities across England. Councillor Lower has set out the key reason for our reluctance to assent to the adoption of this plan. If planning for land uses to be relevant, it needs to be assessed and a plan prepared on the basis of the most accurate forward projections of population growth. And as we have heard, there is reasonable doubt about the figures used by Newcastle City Council in light of the revised household projection figures recently released by DCLG. To set land use planning policy for potentially 25 years on the basis of an overestimate would be problematic. We have recently seen how Durham's plan was rejected by the inspector on the basis of overestimation of numbers. I wonder whether the Newcastle inspector might have come to a similar conclusion on the basis of revised figures had they been available to him at the time. I understand the aspiration of Durham to secure significant growth, but like the inspector, I question the realism of their numbers and the wisdom of an excessive sacrifice of green land. That said, I do fully support the view of councillor Beecham. I do accept the necessity of greenfield release, but it's very important to get the quantum right. We cannot save the confidence tonight and that is in fact so. I would also like, Lord Mayor, to briefly touch on a couple of other points which I'm going to cover in more detail if anyone's interested in an RTPI and RACS policy briefing tomorrow morning. One is the issue of viability. There is still seeming a disparity between local authorities' understanding of commercial viability of site developments and that of the development sector. Some of the sites assessed as deliverable may in fact not be so in practice. There is a particular issue with regard to Brownfield, especially those Brownfield sites which require significant decontamination and site assembly. At this point, I think it is reasonable to note the concerns about the lack of availability at the moment, of funding necessary to bring forward such sites, which I very much hope whichever government is in office after May will look to address quite urgently. Finally, and this relates back to my main point, there is still a need to ensure greater clarity on the duty on local authorities to cooperate with each other. Clearly, there has been very successful joint work with Gateshead which is to be commended, but I still have some concerns about the effectiveness of joint cooperation with North Tyneside, particularly on sites north of the city, and even more significantly, Northumberland's plan is still in the works and still some way from adoption. It is my understanding from previous experience and I assure council I have no direct or current interest on this at the moment at this time, that Newcastle, that Northumberland may be seeking to claim that there may be a need on their part to pass on a shortfall in their supply onto neighbours like Newcastle. This would clearly put further pressure on Newcastle, particularly in the outer west. I'm unclear as to whether this possibility has been fully taken into account. I think going forward, there is likely to be an increased role for the combined authority in ensuring more robust joint working and joint assessment of subregional housing need, employment land requirements and the supporting infrastructure needed as well. In conclusion, there is much in the plan that we do support, particularly in relation to the city centre and particularly in terms of support for business rate of development and employment land. But on the housing numbers issue, we cannot be fully confident that the plan's allocations are correct. This is therefore with reluctance we're not supporting it tonight. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Strether?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very pleased to be able to speak to, in support of this important plan because it is, as has been said, a major step forward for shaping Newcastle's future. As councillor Bell has said in his opening remarks, is that this plan is primarily about housing and economic development. But in addition, it will also enable us to promote health and wellbeing and to tackle health inequalities through development and planning. And the relevant sections of the plan are on page 94. To date, health inequalities have not featured substantively in planning policy, but now with a planning framework and the development of new policies, with the public health team working with planning, we have an exciting opportunity to put that right. There's an abundance of evidence that health inequalities are linked to economic, social, environmental factors and this council is committed to reducing some of these inequalities. And we have embraced the work of Professor Michael Marmot on the social gradient of health and taken on board his message that these inequalities are not inevitable. He has set out six policy areas which are interrelated and the council is committed through its Wellbeing for Life strategy. However, with this new plan, we can make a step change on his fifth policy area, which is, and I quote, "to create and develop healthy and sustainable places and communities". This is directly relevant to spatial planning. The Marmot review team at UCL has helpfully developed policy guidance relevant to health and spatial planning, which includes pollution, green and open space, transport, food, housing, community participation and social isolation. This is a big policy agenda which our core strategy will help us address. Tonight, I just want to say a few words about just one of these and that is food. You will see on page 94 and 95 of the plan that it states that the wellbeing and health of communities will be maintained and improved by controlling the location of and access to unhealthy eating outlets. And I'm pleased to say that officers in the council's public health team and planning are already on the case. This core strategy which seeks to promote wellbeing and health has given us a kickstart to develop supplementary planning document, to have a planning powers to control food and drink outlets. The aim is to have it adopted by the end of this year. And as a member of Kenton Ward, working with residents to stop McDonald's opening a drive through outlet closest to the city's biggest secondary school, I very much welcome that. I recognise that improving the quality of food goes beyond wide, goes wider than planning and action in other areas is needed, but it is clear that there are some overlaps and that spatial planning is important. Planning and public health officers are also working on health, on healthy weight environments and these include access to green space, active travel, access to retail, especially good food in the context of social and economic factors. And this will mean that health impact should be taken into account early in the planning process. If the council were to adopt health impact assessments on plans for development, health inequalities can be reduced through gaining a better understanding of the potential winners and losers in development terms. Health impact assessments could help us make the right choices to promote health and wellbeing. It is very good to have all these aspects of health in the core strategy, but it's important in what we do, we measure and evaluate the outcomes to inform future planning policy and decisions. In due course, I hope the council will have a policy statement on planning and health so we can clearly communicate to our residents on what we are trying to achieve through planning powers and policies to promote health and wellbeing. I urge the opposition tonight not to be destructive regarding the core strategy, but rather to join us in adopting it and indeed as we will, with or without their support. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Davies, Steesenger? No? Someone's put your name down, David. Councillor White?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to speak this evening and would like to warmly welcome and support both the plan and the inspector's report, both of which are hugely significant for the future of Newcastle. Firstly and most importantly, the plan will help to provide 14,000 new jobs and 21,000 new homes. Homes for the younger generation and families who will find it easier to stay in the city due to an increasing, due to an increase in housing offer and availability, an issue the inspector raised in his report at paragraph 60. Substantial evidence of a shortage of three to four bedroom properties and to help stem the migration of family forming households out of the conurbation. The majority of development will be in existing urban areas. The plan helps to protect the city from ad hoc planning applications and shows where it is understood that development could occur with the necessary infrastructure to support it. The plan will help to support the city's prosperity. Other cities are expanding and if we want to retain and attract people to live in the city, then we need to provide the opportunities for them to do so. Secondly, I would like to recognise and acknowledge the momentous level of work that has been involved in the formulation of this plan. We should not underestimate the work that has been involved. Paragraph 3.7 of the council report demonstrates the continuous engagement and ongoing consultation, in particular, the fact that nearly 60,000 comments were received throughout this process. That's 60,000. The amount of work involved in recording and responding to all of these comments should not be underestimated. I would personally like to thank all the residents who engaged in this process and to the hardworking officers of this city council and in Gateshead. I would like to draw council's attention to paragraph six of the inspector's report that states, "The evidence suggests that the consultation process was extensive, thorough, lengthy and designed to reach the whole community. In the view of the inspector, 59,000 comments represent a good level of engagement by the local community. The legal test, however, is whether the council's statement of community involvement has been complied with. The inspector found that there is clear evidence that he has been succeeded." There will of course always be differing views on what should and shouldn't be included in the plan and how it should be taken forward. But views have been listened to. The consultation process, which has been found to exceed statutory requirements, and the examination public, which gave people the opportunity to voice their views to the inspector. The inspector, who was independently appointed on behalf of the government, has examined the plan, weighed up all of the views and found the plan to be sound. I emphasise this again, the independent inspector. There is a statutory requirement for the council to prepare the plan, a process that the council has done and which has taken years to prepare. We are now at a point that an independent professional thinks the plan is sound and we need to move forward. I urge colleagues to support the plan. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ashby?
Lord Mayor, I support the remarks of my Liberal Democrat colleagues, especially about turning over more green belt than we might need to housing. And firstly, I'd also like to thank those council officials, some of the most skilled of whom sadly are no longer employed by us, for their endeavours on the future core strategy. And I note that the city went above and beyond requirements for consultation, as something that well behoves the enabling and empowering city we all seek. However, I also note there is no legal requirement to adopt the plan, but it can still be used to inform the local plan, which we do have a duty to prepare. Within the report is the aim of enhancing neighbourhoods and rebalancing housing stock by delivering new homes, particularly much needed family homes, with access to services and facilities. Amen to that. It's my view that this might better be achieved through maximising Brownfield development and recycling existing housing stock. £4 million has been spent on void housing stock this year and the target of bringing back into occupation 200 units has already been exceeded by 76. This is good news and hopefully a trend. We will need much more of this sort of action as future students fill the acres of newly built and in the pipeline halls of residence, vacating large numbers of older houses whose standards of upkeep have not necessarily been at the highest. But there are other societal changes which I don't believe have been adequately taken into account. There is already a windfall of about 400 private flats from converted offices at regent centre being planned. The irresistible rise of internet shopping will mean that local retail outlets will fall into disuse and conversion to housing will be a sensible way of removing the eyesores they might become. A national private developer has expressed an interest in building hundreds of new flats to rent if it can do a suitable deal with the city on a central site. All these things play exactly to the report's aim I quoted earlier. All these things play exactly to the report's aim I quoted earlier, which green belt developments don't. Walking around the Great Park within Parkinson's Ward this weekend, I was struck, as I always am, by the lack of community facilities, the sole corner shop, the maintenance burden which will shortly fall on the city council as roads and footpaths are adopted. Green belt development is spectacular in the short term, but no substitute for maximum brownfield developments in the midst of existing communities, and that's what our plans should reflect more.
Thank you, councillor. The speakers have been certainly balanced, so I'll call on councillor Forbes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Let's make no mistake, this plan is vital to the economic prosperity of Newcastle. It will shape development and deliver economic growth and jobs in our city over the next fifteen years. Importantly, it makes sure that future development happens in a planned and sustainable way, a way that helps to deliver our ambitious plans for growth while protecting the interests of existing communities. Without this plan, and I urge those who are planning to vote against this tonight to think very carefully, without this plan, we will have a free-for-all in development, unchecked development, and putting major areas of our green belt at risk. This plan also leads to new communities emerging in our city, and the plan recognises the need to ensure that this is matched by improvements to infrastructure, from roads to public transport networks, to new schools, health centres and leisure facilities. And we also need to ensure that we plan for ample green space and manage risks like local flood management, as well as renewing our commitment to sustainable housing. As councillor Strether said, in keeping with our responsibilities for public health, we want to ensure that we create healthy communities that support healthy living throughout all stages of an individual's life. That includes ensuring we have the right type and location of housing that meets the needs of a growing older population. And we must make sure that we develop balanced and inclusive communities, which is why the commitments of fifteen per cent of affordable housing developments will help ensure that those who want to get a foot on the property ladder for the first time are able to do so. This plan also supports the development of existing neighbourhoods, not just in the urban areas like Walker and Biker and Scotswood, but crucially, the villages that we have within the city boundaries, which for so long have felt under pressure from declining population and declining local resources. And this plan offers a measured approach to rebuilding those villages, to make sure that they're great places to live with great local facilities on people's doorstep. And of course, this plan ensures that more than fifty per cent of new housing will develop on brownfield sites, an extremely strong commitment, given the way in which resources to support recycling of brownfield sites have been virtually eliminated by this current government. This plan means not only new housing, Lord Mayor, but also fourteen thousand additional employment opportunities, much-needed jobs for our local population in sectors where we want to grow and be world leaders in. And we want to make sure that we work alongside this plan to ensure that young people are supported to develop the skills that they'll need to take on the jobs that we are seeking to create, ensuring we have a skilled workforce able to do the jobs of the future. We want to make our city fit for the twenty-first century. That means challenging the dominance of the car, making our city easier to get around by foot or by bike, and it also means putting in place modern infrastructure like broadband to ensure that businesses can connect to their new markets around the world. Lord Mayor, this plan represents a managed approach to growth. It promotes sustainable growth, not unchecked growth. It strikes the right balance between jobs, housing and environmental protections and sets out our demands for infrastructure as the plan develops over the next fifteen years, and I would urge colleagues across the council chamber to support it.
Thank you, councillor Forbes. I'm now calling councillor Bell to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not going to make any apologies for being quite emotionally fuelled about this particular issue. Being a Newcastle lad, born and bred, fifty-three years now, I know how important this is for the city. And I would hope that members on that other side of the chamber would realise that too because they're awesome, good colleagues, good friends across there, with different political beliefs, but I do know that some of them believe in this city. And I really ask them tonight to think about that. If you do believe in this city, believe in the plan, because we'll not be much of a city without a plan going forward. Lord Mayor, I did see some squirming tonight coming from the opposition, sitting well and truly wedged on that fence, and I do think that some of them's actually in a bit of a moral dilemma. Can I just put to bed the population figures first of all? Because in preparing the plan, the council has pledged to use the most accurate detail and information that's available at the time of the plan. The plan inspector examined this quite robustly and the issue in great depth, and he had no doubt that our approach was robust. So I'm not quite sure where the opposition's coming from with why the inspector felt something different. It actually does go into the detail of, if you look at the figures, that what may happen is that the population figures, the new figures that were released showed a slight drop. But whilst there may be slightly fewer people, what it did identify, which wasn't said, was that they're likely to live in smaller households. So what that may mean is, we need more houses. Strange that the opposition didn't mention that. While I was sitting here just listening to what was being said, I was reminded of a series that I've been catching up on when I've had some spare time on the TV. And being political environment, one might think that it was the House of Cards perhaps, which is a series that I do love, but no, it wasn't that political. It was actually The Walking Dead that I was thinking of, because what we actually have, we have an opposition that show tonight that are walking around aimlessly with no thoughts whatsoever and not being able to think to the future. And for some of my friends across there, I hope that you do bear this in mind because I know that you are intelligent people and you do think about the city. Some words that have came up tonight, which I think are most suitable for tonight, actually we've talked about them before, which is arrogance and hypocrisy, and there's not a better word tonight, no better than, you know, a highly-trained planned inspector, and the plan has been found sound and largely compliant, so I think we shouldn't be arguing against that. Hypocrisy, for example, the fourth of the January councillor, Anita Law, said, "I know we have to have this and it has to go forward." Is this about saving the green belt or is this about saving votes? Lord Mayor, I'd just like to put on record my thanks to all the communities that's been involved, all of the residents of Newcastle, all the businesses, all of the staff that's been involved in compiling this report over the years. It's been an immense amount of work. I'd also like to thank ex-councillor, um, um... Henry. Just forgot, he certainly have one of them was. Henry, just Henry to me. I'd like to thank Henry for his work that he did actually put into this, because he did, he took on quite a lot of work. And in particular, I'd like to thank the officers, that's officers with the council, but also Harvey and Nick Lohr, who are no longer with the council, put immense amount of work. Lord Mayor, think in your minds tonight, please, and vote for this. It's a future plan for the city and it's a future for Newcastle. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I think that was Henri Murison, councillor Bell. This report agreed, or do we require a vote? Vote? Name vote? Okay, do we ring the bell? So this is for the adoption? Somebody ring the bell? Are we all done? Report carried. Item seven, devolution and a modern charter for local freedom. Sorry? Try it again? You're all done? Report's carried. Item seven, devolution and a modern charter for local freedom. They call on the leader of council to move the report, and we have councillor McCarthy to second here. We can start done because councillor McCarthy's not here.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This Charter for Local Freedoms is something which has been developed by the Core Cities Group over the last year or so. Devolution and devolution of powers and responsibilities is one of the new fault lines in British politics. It crosses parties. It's not something which is owned or disowned by either of the major political parties, but it is clearly the direction of travel for much of the debate in the country at the moment, sparked by what happened in Scotland, but increasingly, there is interest within England for what devolved powers could mean. And the Core Cities Group have been working, as members will know, for a very long time now on proposals for devolution to cities, primarily because devolve powers to cities promotes faster and more sustainable economic growth, but also because we think it can lead to a better quality of our public services, better joined-up service provision and ensuring that we get better value for money by joining up services to work collectively for the interests of communities in a place, rather than being run from behind desks in Whitehall. So this charter has been developed, which sets out some key principles. It's based upon the eight-hundredth anniversary of Magna Carta, which was obviously developed in twelve fifteen, and this is an attempt to start to set out a stall for what are the values and principles which will drive devolution as this important debate develops over the next few months and years. There is no doubt, Lord Mayor, that this is a significant agenda for our city. We know better here how to shape the public services to serve our local people. We know better where to put the infrastructure investment to help to grow jobs more quickly. We know better here which young people are furthest from the labour market and therefore need additional help and support in developing their ability to take on apprenticeships and training. We know better where people are unemployed and how to design work programmes around ensuring that they're supported back into the workplace. We know better where the poor health is in our populations. We know better where the environmental challenges that we need to address are. And all of these are issues we want to see greater local powers and responsibilities to be able to address these issues ourselves. So this charter, Lord Mayor, which I hope council will agree to signing up to tonight, is part of a wider national movement, part of a wider approach to a new politics, one which is much more local in flavour, one which doesn't rely on people supposedly experts behind desks in Whitehall, but one which is about empowering local communities and local areas to do more for themselves and to achieve more together. And so, Lord Mayor, I would ask council to support the charter and the important work that we're doing within the Core Cities Group to promote and further the cause of devolution in England and the United Kingdom.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formally second and reserve the right to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, certainly you'll find support on this side of the chamber too, because for Liberal Democrats and Liberals before them, devolution to cities and regions has been a very important part of our philosophy. And I don't want to break the sense of harmony, however, there is one party that's come fairly late to this recognition, and I congratulate the leader for at least being frank in one or two of his speeches about the lack of enthusiasm and support from the last government. And I'm very pleased, and maybe it's ironical in some way, that it's a Conservative-led coalition government that has actually provided the true momentum for devolving power and responsibilities, and I'm very pleased to be part of that. In the paper that we're asked to note and endorse, I think all the right ingredients are there. I think it's not exactly the same as the Manchester offer, and there are reasons for that. I would like to think that in the setting up of a North East Investment Fund, if we get the support for that, that it does include some way of creating or help create a regional bank, because I sincerely believe that that is needed, and I hope that local pension funds, for example, could be significant contributors to that. I also think in the section on international connectivity, it's actually not just about transport, it's about the voice of the North East, of the combined authority, the city in Europe, for example, and I'm very sad that we have no voice in Europe, and I hope one of the priorities for the combined authority and the left and others will be to try and get us that voice in Europe, that place in Europe. I just want to say one or two other things, though. I went to an event this morning that chief executive spoke at, and it was called a Northern Powerhouse Business Breakfast briefing, and the only, as far as I could see, I might be wrong, the only Labour politician there was Peter Box from Wakefield. I was sad, and it wasn't noticed, that none of our council leaders in our area were present at such an important debate. And some interesting things were said, and they are in some part reflected in the paper here, but I think, and the leader touched on it, there is a distinction, but they have to come together sometimes, a distinction between collaboration and partnership, and we on this side of the chamber have talked a lot about accelerating collaboration and partnership between authorities, for example, that on the one hand, and devolution and power on the other hand. And at some point, those two debates have got to come together, and they cannot come together in the form of an imposed super-regional mayor without some kind of referendum. We've said it before on this side of the chamber, and we'll say it again now, we are not supportive, if that is going to be the end game, we are not supportive of a city-region combined authority mayor without a referendum. We would like to see ultimately, and it's not tomorrow's agenda, but it will be beyond, directly elected regional assembly and some kind of development body that's supportive, something like for the North East, the Scottish model. And if we want parity, if we want a chance to level the playing field, then that's exactly what we've got to be working to. But for the moment, it's about function, not form, and I agree with the leader just winding up, I think we've got to be very clear about the ask that the region is looking for, and we've got to make sure that there's buy-in to what's in this document here. We've got to then be very sure about the delivery mechanisms, who leads, and we've got to be very sure about the delivery capacity and capability. Beyond that, democracy, transparency, accountability. Remember, we are politicians, they're important.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ashley?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As councillor Faulkner says, we Liberal Democrats welcome the prospect of major devolution for the North East, especially after the coalition government announced plans to transfer responsibility for health and social care to the Greater Manchester local authorities. However, despite this report, we're discussing, self-evidently, we're not at the forefront of the radical devolution campaign or what's been called devolution on demand. We agree with the coalition government's two thousand and eleven report. Cities are the engines of economic growth and they will be critical to our economic recovery. They are, and they're having an impact on the economy and local people. The average wage in Newcastle, according to our own figures, is closing the gap on the national average. It's up to four hundred and ninety-three pounds a week now. Wages in the North East are rising four times as fast as for people living in London. The House of Commons Communities and Local Government Committee opined that areas to which any fiscal powers would devolve should demonstrably function as an economic unit. That means crossing the artificial boundaries of local government and getting our act together. By our act, of course, I mean the regions' Labour council leaders' act, but this region is not just them, it's a wide range of shades of opinion and political representation. The Labour's trying to act as if it's their own private fiefdom. A much greater role for other political parties, especially those with councillors in many or all of the councils on the North East Combined Authority, is essential for democratic legitimacy and transparency of activities. We are falling behind the curve. Greater Manchester, Cheshire East and those well-known northern powerhouses, Peterborough and Cambridge, will be able to keep extra revenues for new business rates from next month. Where are we on this list? The localist think-tank has suggested that local enterprise partnerships should receive much greater funding than either Labour or Conservatives are currently suggesting, and this would bring a twelve-fold boost to local economies for each pound so invested if they're given what they want. But this should go hand in hand with them becoming more democratic, transparent and accountable, and this is another area in which NECA should be leading, not dragging its feet. North East Labour leaders need to think long and hard about why this region isn't in the first wave of devolution. They need to get their act together and work more constructively with the government to secure the better deal and devolution of real powers and funding for the region which is therefore taking, because the reaction of Labour shadow ministers to the Manchester deal indicates the opportunity might not be an offer in the unlikely event they win the general election.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Thank you, thank you, councillor. councillor Mitchell-Lower?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this came to the Combined Authority Scrutiny Committee this week, and I think that it was quite interesting, and I just want to say, if anyone's really interested, we actually had the BBC covering it for national television. So this is a big issue for people about what's going to happen with devolution and for the North East. I fully endorse what's been said already. However, one of the things that we did discuss, and I think that may be something that the leader could take back, is how we sell this to the public, it's not just another layer of bureaucracy. And, I mean, one of the things that was said at the scrutiny committee was about how we actually sex it up so the public understand what we're trying to do. You know, this is about more power for the city and more power for the region than, you know, the devolution protocol. It doesn't mean very much. I think we've had lots of consultation with businesses and politicians. I think we now need to think very carefully about how we engage the public and get them on board with this, because without them behind us, it's going to be a really hard slog to take it forward, because it can't just be a political thing, it's got to be a regional thing, it's got to be people understanding, it's about jobs, it's about transport, it's about all the things that matter on your doorstep, and giving us some power and the money and the say in what goes on for us. So I hope that the leader will take that forward and look at what the scrutiny committee said, because it was very interesting. If anyone watches, I think we're on tonight on television, BBC somewhere, and it's mainly Rob Hamilton, and showing his best side and repeating things several times before they were happy. At one point, they said, could we say things but with less words? And I think that was very prophetic of us, but thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor. councillor Beecham?
Lord Mayor, obviously we all welcome moves towards devolution, and I certainly support and welcome this report. It's all very well talking about fiscal devolution if you have a tax base. The problem is that we do not have the tax base in this region to sustain a straightforward transfer of responsibilities. What is essential is that that goes hand in hand with a needs-based grant system and a reallocation of resources from areas which are much better off than we are and others like us. This is not just a simple north-south phenomenon. You can think of inner London boroughs, you can think of coastal towns, you can think of parts of the north-west and Midlands, none of which would gain substantially from a devolution of fiscal powers, because, as I say, the tax base is not there. I've complained in the past about the present government's tendency to pass the buck, to pass responsibility without passing the brux. Without the latter, devolution would be meaningless, and it's clearly essential for that major consideration to be embodied in any further plans. Simply handing over responsibilities, for example, to health and social care without funding it adequately, is going to present problems to us all. The move is the right one, but it has to be accompanied by an adequate financial resource.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just very briefly, using a few words, the fact is that this is a council, we are a council, that have huge ambitions and huge aspirations for our city. This is a step forward that we are hoping to take. We need to take control of our own destiny. We're doing that by having very robust budget plans going forward, by having plans such as the core strategy that we've just agreed, by having a forward-thinking capital programme of investment in this city. What we need are the additional powers to develop the social and economic infrastructure within this city, and this is another step in that direction. It's not the whole agenda, it will never be the whole agenda, but it is a step forward, and I'm very pleased to hear that it seems as if it's unanimous across the council to take this step. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Now I call on the leader to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I did wonder why I got to the end of my speech at the beginning of this and realised I still had a green light, and that's because I forgot to turn my page over, so I missed the second page of my notes. So I must apologise, I forgot to talk about the North East Combined Authority devolution deal, which is the other part of what's here for consideration tonight. And that's a really important, significant step forward, because what the North East Combined Authority are doing is not trying to do a backroom deal with politicians in Westminster, but seeking to engage with communities and businesses across the region to say, broadly, these are the things that we think we need in the medium to long term to make a long-term difference to our region. Do you agree? Because we think that that considerably strengthens our hand when we then start to negotiate this with government, to ensure that what we're saying has credibility, is rooted in reality, and we have an evidence base that it will make a difference. That's the approach that we took with the city deal, which was the first wave of devolution that I negotiated with government, and having the support of business and knowing that what we were saying was rooted in what people were saying would make a difference for the city was a hugely important part of the credibility around the negotiations. And that's the same principle that we're adopting within the Combined Authority. Can I just thank members for their contributions for the debate tonight? Councillor Beecham in particular has put his finger on the most significant issue here, because you cannot have devolution if there's nothing to devolve to. And we know that local authorities in this part of the world have been extremely badly affected by cuts, and the concept of devolution cannot be considered in isolation from resource equalisation, particularly for local government. And so part of our message to government is that the two need to be looked at together. We cannot simply have a situation where we are cast adrift as a region and simply left to fend for ourselves, given the years of under-investment. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't also have a long-term ambition to be a net contributor to the UK economy. There is no reason why the economy of this part of the world over the next 20 years couldn't overtake other parts of the UK and be a net contributor to the UK's coffers, rather than at the moment a recipient of support. And that should be our ambition, because that sets us a clear target for how we want our economy to succeed in the years to come. So I thank members for their support and contributions tonight, and I think this is probably the most significant political debate that we're likely to see play out over the next parliament in so many different ways. But I think we as a city are well geared for that debate and well positioned to take advantage of any new devolution offers that may be offered to us by any incoming government.
Thank you, councillor. Is the report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item eight, questions by members. We have also received one question more for written reply, this together with the response that's been circulated and displayed in the foyer. Item nine, cabinet member update, investment and development. We're now calling councillor Bell to introduce the report. councillor Bell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll not take up much time in introducing the report, and I promise I won't have a Kevin Keegan moment about how much I love football or how much I love this city. It was interesting to note that an independent report was published the day I read in the journal, I believe it was, that Newcastle's been identified as one of the top ten fastest-growing cities in the country. And I think that's just right, that that should be noted, because everything within this report, which is a very diverse portfolio that I'm responsible for, and it's a very diverse report, it's probably just the tip of the iceberg, because within investment and development, myself and the officers never stop, never stop, and we're determined to keep on driving this city forward. The department's been very successful in capturing external funds and bringing them into the city. Government funds, we've been successful in doing that. But what we've succeeded in capturing is capital money. This by no means ever replaces the revenue money that's been lost through the unfair cuts that's been imposed by the coalition government, especially on the people of the North East. So let's please not confuse the two, about the money that's coming in, and what we're seeing is infrastructure works. And I mentioned just this afternoon, that if you count up the money between Cowgate Roundabout and the new money that we've received for Hadrick's Mill, that'll amount to somewhere in the region of about £26 million. I haven't got the exact figure on that. But that takes a lot of hard work, a lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of resources to make sure that we're successful in them bids. So the department itself will keep on driving, we will keep on trying to be successful in grant applications, in bid applications, we will continue to work with other authorities, whether it be Gateshead, North Tyneside, or further afield, and we will continue to work with the private sector. The private sector is bringing jobs, it's bringing vibrance into the city, and it's bringing new life into the city. So one of the top ten fastest-growing cities, yes, we are, Lord Mayor, and I think we all should be proud of that. I'll move the report and take any questions.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Higgins?
Yes, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Can I thank councillor Bell for what is a very comprehensive report? Two items that I intend to raise, and both will give us a great deal of surprise too. The first one relates to the development in Scotswood, which, after many, many years of sort of stalling and stagnation, we're welcome now, we see tremendous development in terms of housing, which is moving at a pace that I think surprises myself and my colleagues as to how quickly this is coming on. But one of the things that we do need to try and promote as well very quickly, and at the moment doesn't seem to be progressing as well as I would hope, is improvements to the infrastructure in terms of transport and also retail facilities. Some years ago down there, we did have Project Orpheus being floated as an idea for Supertrams, but because of the cost of that, that was shelved. I've given up many years ago on the idea of the metro being down there, but I think we do need to look at ways of improving the transport infrastructure and attracting retail into the area if we're going to really sort of progress and build on the development that's going on down there. And the second point to get, I don't think will surprise councillor Bell too much, is making reference to the Rugby League Magic Weekend that's due to be held on the 30th and 31st of May. And, you know, I do feel that Rugby League is a tremendous sport that lives in the shadow to a certain extent of its rugby union counterpart. And if I can just make reference, and this is not a criticism of councillor Powers, but in his preface to the Safe Newcastle report, he welcomes the Rugby Union World Cup with all its visitors, we're going to keep them safe in the city, but makes no mention of the Magic Weekend and the Rugby League visitors, who we hope will be welcomed to the city. I think it's tremendous sport, but my enthusiasm about this Magic Weekend is that the Rugby Union World Cup later in the year is a one-off event that is unlikely to return to the city at any time in the foreseeable future. The Rugby League Magic Weekend is an annual event that brings tremendous benefits to the city that hosts it. Now, in recent years, that event has been held in Manchester and brought tremendous social and economic benefits to Manchester, and I think we can hijack that and bring that event to Newcastle with all the benefits that will bring in the years ahead. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Davis Slessinger?
Lord Mayor, councillor Bell, I refer to page 48 of your report, and your specific reference to the Gosforth cycle scheme, and I also have in mind the related Gosforth corridor scheme. In view of the chaos both these schemes are causing, a situation acknowledged by the Member for Parliament Catherine McKinnon, particularly at the region centre and the Hollywood Avenue junctions, together with the recently disclosed proposals to change office accommodation at the region centre into residential accommodation, the development of some 300 to 400 apartments. Would you agree with me that both these schemes need to be revisited in the light of the further traffic increases that will undoubtedly occur? And furthermore, that both schemes should be put on hold as we await the result of the Onbottins inquiry?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. councillor Higgins, it came as no surprise at all. Take the rugby, the Magic Weekend, the Rugby League. Yes, I do, I think it was a fantastic achievement for us as a city to manage to claw that away from its homeland, where it's normally played. And yes, it has a fantastic turnover, and the fact that people will become more involved with rugby, I think it's got to be a good thing for the city, especially because it's a sport that's actually seen in the shadows, not just of Rugby Union, but also, let's not forget, how popular football is in the North East of England. I think through working with partners such as the Falcons Rugby Club, and the fact that now that there'll be Rugby League and Rugby Union played on a fourth-generation astroturf pitch at the Falcons, has got to be good. It's going to give people the opportunity to see rugby for the best part of the year, one sort or another. And there is always a price difference. There's a price difference between Union compared to Rugby League. But I think because we've now got both, which will have homes in Newcastle, that's got to be good for supporters, good for families, and hopefully it's going to encourage more people to get involved in rugby and actually take part in sport and help with the health side, the health agenda, and try to reduce obesity, increase the youth, increase participation within the youth. Scotswood, absolutely fantastic news, 200 houses, it's great to see, it's had the support of the councillors in the area, but so has the support of councillors across. And it's important that we utilise, as has been said within the plan, that we utilise the urban areas. So 200 houses already completed, 100 sold already. So that is really fantastic news. Now that we've adopted the plan, we start work on the infrastructure, not just for Scotswood but across the city. Gosforth, I thought Gosforth may come up tonight for some strange reason, especially down the north side of Gosforth, next to the region centre, and continuing further down. Let's remember that, yes, there was problems with the traffic a couple of weeks ago, apologies from the council for the port that we played in that as a council to the road users. There was also another implication, which was the utilities actually took on work at the same time, which was the gas utilities. And I think one thing we couldn't have was a delay in letting the gas utilities come into the area. So that did cause congestion at the time. Newcastle is undergoing major road infrastructure changes, and there will be some delays, that's going to be inevitable. The council will try to reduce the delays as much as possible, we will try to work with the motorists and road users, and we'll advertise when we know there's going to be delays, that's going to be of the council's making, and try to put alternative routes in place. But I do think that we've got a plan for the future. If members bring to the council chamber that there's problems with the road infrastructure now, what's it going to be like for the next generation? And what sort of legacy are we leaving to that generation if we don't address it when we know there's problems now? So I think it's wrong, it is definitely wrong to try and call a stop to putting improvements in place for this generation and for the next generation. And remember, the implications on health have also been proven. I also think that, councillor Slessinger, we wouldn't know yet, but I've just actually responded to the other councillor Slessinger, after she had wrote me an email, and I'm actually able to do the research work for her, about the office development and the change of use. I think rather than bring it to us as a council, councillor Slessinger would be best directed to take that up with his party, who's in administration of the government, because it's the coalition government that has relaxed the planning laws, which allows this to happen. So I think it's a bit of a chick bringing it to the council and saying that the council has caused this. We haven't, Lord Mayor. It's the relaxations which makes it very hard for councils to try to enforce and try to make things better for areas, even if sometimes the name of an area is made up, because I believe that some people call the area Gosforth Town now. I'm not quite sure where that came from, but we'll improve the Gosforth High Street area as much as what we can, and I would ask the councillors in the area to support what we're bringing forward, rather than opposing them time after time. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Stockdale?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. As councillor Bell knows and colleagues on this side of the chamber know, I'm an accomplished and keen cyclist. And I note in the report, I'm delighted that we've been successful in securing an extension to the City Cycling Ambition Fund. I'd like to ask councillor Bell if he would make representations on behalf of the good people of Blaglow, that we can perhaps look at securing some of that funding to extend the strategic cycling network into our ward, so councillor Pearson tonight can get in our tandem when we're calms and round the streets. I would appreciate that, thank you.
councillor Bell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Never misses a chance, councillor Stockdale, does he? Thanks for free wonders as well. No, I won't say yes, because what we've actually done with the City Cycle Ambition Fund has been successful again in securing further funding for the next phase. So based on the routes that we've actually identified as a strategic routes, there'll then be expansion with the second round of funding to improve the facilities and extend them, but it will not actually incorporate new routes. But what I will say is- But what I will say is that we will be looking to expand, because this is only phase two. I think, again, for the next generation, what we're looking at is making Newcastle a cycle-safe area, that's for all age groups, but that's going to take time. It's going to take time to change culture, it's going to take time to change the infrastructure, and it's going to take time to get the message across that the roads are for all, not just for car drivers. So I would hope that not just Blakelaw, councillor Stockdale, will have improved cycling facilities, but other wards right across the city.
Thank you very much, thank you. Is anybody else, are we all done? Does council agree to receive the report? Thank you. Item six, now this is the Safe Newcastle Plan. I understand councillor Powers is moving this motion. And do we have a second there? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First let me apologise to colleagues, councillor McCarthy had intended to move this report. Unfortunately, she's been delayed, so I'm a little bit unprepared to move it. I was planning on picking up questions and responding. So this is the Safe Newcastle Plan for this coming ministerial year, tackling crime and protecting communities. First of all, I can pay our thanks to the partners who sit on the Safety Castle Partnership and the contribution that they continually make to keeping our city safe, also to overview and scrutiny who have had an opportunity to see this report and to feed in their comments on this as well. And colleagues will be aware that the format of this report has changed as of previous years. It is now being altered to be a more short, accessible, more high-level summary of key activity that will be delivered by the partnership, so that it will make it a lot more easier for members to understand exactly what areas of work that the Community Safety Partnership will be focusing on. And I think what's incredibly important is that, reflected throughout this document, is the strong and effective partnership work, which is key to delivering a safer Newcastle. Additionally, it shows that this administration remains committed to tackling crime and ensuring Newcastle remains a safe city. The plan sets out the work programme for 2015/16 to maintain a safety equation in Newcastle, that builds on our successes and shows that despite significant coalition government cuts, both to our own budgets and our partners' budgets, that through collaborative work we will continue to deliver safety for all who work, live and enjoy our Newcastle. It's worth pointing out the performance figures at the moment. The good news in terms of that is that over the long term, we are still significantly down on the total number of all crime in the city. However, we are seeing an increase this year. Members should be reassured that this is in line with our other neighbours, and we are still below the core city's average in terms of increased number of crime. However, it doesn't mean that we'll be taking our eye off the ball, we'll still be pushing to bring that number even down, but members will be all too aware, recognising the significant challenges we're facing with a decrease in budgets and also the police and their budget allocation, which many of us on this side of the chamber believe to be also unfair in terms of the distribution, much like the local authorities' funding cuts that we've faced. What I'd like, in terms of the successful piece of work that I'd like to draw the attention to, we are still the only authority to enact the late-night levy, which will remain and continue to support our community safety work in the city centre, such as the taxi marshals, the street pastors, the door entry systems that scan IDs, as well as the haven that we have. And safe neighbourhoods, action and problem-solving groups, the SNAPs groups, are regularly meeting in every ward across the city, bringing together the police, community safety officer, YCH and elected members, as well as the partners when needed, that continue to deliver effective problem-solving in their areas, and their work is continuing to play their part in keeping the city safe. In terms of one issue that is particularly concerning for myself, is the increases that we're seeing in domestic violence and sexual violence against particularly women and young girls. Through that, we've launched a new priority for Safe Newcastle. We've now got the single priority that's focused specifically on that work, drawing together the partnership work across the whole city to effectively address this issue. There are a number of issues from my perspective, as what I believe is contributing to that increase. I think some of the more positives that we should see out of that is the increased confidence that people have in coming forward and reporting these crimes, the confidence that the services are there to deliver, services to help them, protect them, to take them out of those situations and to get justice for all those victims. Additionally, I think there are other factors outside of our control, what is perhaps driving some of our numbers, the historical number of crimes that are coming forward, the Jimmy Savile effect, as many people refer to it, where people are more willing now to come forward and report, historic crimes is increasing, perhaps the number that we're seeing coming forward in Newcastle. And what we would like to see is more focus being placed on that, and that's what we'll continue to deliver and ensure that we address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Forbes?
I second the report and reserve the right to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Nita Loa?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to welcome the fact that the new layout of this report is so much easier to read than it has been in the past. There's just one issue I was wanting to raise, and that is the fact that we've had a huge change with the Anti-Social Behaviour, Crime and Policing Act at the end of last year. And there is now powers which have been designated to the council, there are new powers, and there are also some that have gone to the police that maybe we should have had on our own. However, I have to say that I sat on one of the first housing committees, or whatever you want to call them these days, tenancy appeals, which was heard under the new powers. And it's quite interesting, and I think it would have been very good if there had been something in here which actually covered what those new powers were, who they'd been delegated to, and what they actually meant for members and for the council. But apart from that, I think it's a very, very good report and the best way forward than what we've had for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Councillor Higgins?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor, and can I thank councillor Powers for presenting this report? I promise I won't take the opportunity to mention Rugby League again, but I mean, I welcome the report, which reaffirms really about what a safe city Newcastle is and the tremendous work that goes on. But I just want to particularly mention about the work with young people, I think it's on page 26, and about the work that goes on in preventing young people becoming the victims of crime and also becoming involved in crime and antisocial behaviour. And for the last two years, two years, three years, I've been a member of the Youth Offending Team Partnership Board, and I've been privy to hearing about the tremendous work that goes on by the Youth Offending Team, who are working with some very challenging young people and their professionalism and their tenacity, working with those young people, I think is to be commended. But the question really I wanted to put, or the comment, is that it's very important that all the partners to the Youth Offending Team, and it's made up of partners from different organisations, that they all have the same or make the same commitment. Now, they do make the same commitment in terms of the makeup of the people working in the team, but at one or two recent meetings, questions have been raised about the contribution that other organisations make financially. And I would just like to stress that I think it's very important that at these times, when we're all faced with shrinking budgets and financial challenges, that everybody who is part of the Safe Newcastle Partnership, and particularly in relation to the Youth Offending Team, makes an equal contribution to the success and effectiveness of that team.
Thank you very much, thank you. Is anyone else? Yes, councillor. Yes, I like so.
Yeah, can I thank Stephen for presenting a fairly succinct report. I remember the days when I had that portfolio, basically you were basically rading through 300 pages, which is completely absurd. What I would like to say actually, I think Newcastle is a relatively safe city. I want to address the issue of grooming and sex exploitation. I've now embraced social media, some of you may have noticed, and I'm in sort of an exchange with a very good Labour MP who's got his feet on the ground, can actually connect with working-class people, and was responsible for basically exposing Cyril Smith's misdemeanours when he was a Liberal Democrat MP for Rochdale. No, just a, no. Secondly, I would also like to... He was a Liberal MP, and he, until his retirement, he was a Liberal Democrat MP, and quite frankly, it is to be, I haven't read this, please listen. It has plenty to do with this, you know, if you just burn me out and I will start to link this with Newcastle, right? I'd also like to sort of promote and recognise the good work that Sarah Champion's been doing in Rotherham, okay, and the expose there. And I would just like to say, thank God, we haven't got these sorts of problems in Newcastle, and that's thanks to largely attributable to basically an effective social services team, youth offending team, the police, and basically that we are a responsible city council, which takes crime seriously and indeed puts the victims of crime before the perpetrators of crime. And that's the point I wish to make, okay? We don't have these issues up in Newcastle. Unfortunately, we have them elsewhere in the, well, of course they're issues, but we don't have them on such a scale, Greg, that we do in other towns in the UK. So in a nutshell, I support Stephen on his delivery of this very good report. Crime is coming down, however, antisocial behaviour still remains an issue in some of our deprived areas, but with neighbourhood police teams working in conjunction with local communities, basically it's good to see that basically the situation is under control. Now, can I make one further point, Lord Mayor?
Yes.
Very quickly, Rob will be pleased that I haven't softened my stance on crime, but what does bug me actually, my sister contacted me this morning, and I would say she's a working-class woman who works in Tesco's, and what she can't quite understand, what a lot of working-class women voters can't understand, is why these sex offenders seem to be getting off with sort of modest sentences, right, by liberal judges, yet young women who commit basically petty crimes like shotlifting are getting similar sentences to sex offenders. And quite frankly, I think that's totally unacceptable, and I place this at the hands of the judiciary, which is basically biased, white, middle class, totally disconnected with the lives of working people and their families. Thank you.
Councillor Lambert? Was it, were we all done? You all done? Yeah. Councillor Forbes?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to draw attention to a number of items included in this report that haven't yet been covered by colleagues. Of course, the late-night levy has been a significant step forward for the late-night economy of the city, but that's been matched by the police taking a much more aggressive stance on some of the licensing issues, particularly in the city centre. And that is hugely welcome, because what that's done is reverse the trend of laissez-faire licence-giving towards one which feels much more manageable, and which I know city centre residents in particular are extremely pleased about. That direction of travel is hugely welcome. I would also like to pay tribute to the police for their very sensitive policing of a number of different issues, not just the recent Newcastle Sunderland Derby match, where they took a very different approach to how that match was policed, but also the Pegida demonstration and the anti-demonstration, and recently the Angry White Men and the counter-demonstration in the city centre. And I know that a number of members have been involved in particularly those last two demonstrations, and have said to me privately that the professionalism of the police couldn't be faulted, and I know that council owes a great debt of gratitude for the very sensitive way that they police such difficult and tense situations like that. But I'd also like to pay tribute to Talmir Farren Rescue Service, which is included briefly in this report, but who does a lot of projects, like the Phoenix Project and Safety Works, which are about encouraging young people who are either at risk of offending or who have been single offenders to re-engage with society and to do something meaningful. And we shouldn't underestimate the power of the Farren Rescue Service undertaking that kind of activity and giving those young people a much-needed structure around their lives and helping them to turn away from the path of offending. There is a very strong focus in the work that goes on within the Newcastle Safety Partnership and the police around protecting women from domestic violence and speaking out against violence against women and girls. I think that's been a hugely welcome policy development over the last few years. But I would also like to pay particular tribute to our chief constable, Sue Sim, who has had steadfast commitment to the principle of neighbourhood policing. And it's of great concern to me that I see other parts of the country starting to dismantle our neighbourhood policing services as a result of the cuts. So far, Northumbria Police have held absolutely steadfast to the concept of neighbourhood policing, and I know that that's at the direct intervention of the chief constable, and I very much hope that Northumbria Police will continue to have that level of commitment. I know that the level of cuts that they face is difficult and challenging as it is to us as a city council, but I know that that's probably the single most important thing that the police do in our communities, to make us feel safe and secure, have a visible, high-profile presence, which ensures policing by consensus within our communities, rather than simply a response service, which is what the police have been reduced to in some parts of the country and increasingly more parts of the country as the cuts really start to bite. So there's a huge amount of very positive stuff in this report, Lord Mayor, and I'm very, very pleased to be able to second it for council.
Thank you, councillor. I now call on councillor Powers to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'll try and keep this brief. First of all, I'm going to take the opportunity to apologise to councillor Higgins, I've obviously touched on a raw nerve, and say I am absolutely fantastic that Magic Weekend's coming to Newcastle. I'm going to be very much looking forward to seeing it, and don't worry, we're absolutely committed to making sure that that is also adequately managed and the city remains safe and operational for all in a day. Just to pick up, councillor Law highlighted around the new powers, I did send out a briefing to all members back in January on that. I'll make sure that gets recirculated, just so members are reminded of the details that is introduced as new powers. In terms of the comments that were made about the financial commitments of other partners, you know, as I said in my opening remark, all our partners have faced huge funding reductions like we have ourselves. We are having conversations about ensuring that they're able to put in the most that I can put in to support the partnership work and the whole raft of different work that's ongoing, and we'll continue to have those conversations and encourage partners. But it is very challenging times, not just for ourselves, but for all that's involved in the partnership. One thing that I forgot to pick up on my opening remarks was around the work that we've been doing about tackling so-called legal highs, these novel site residences in our city. We have progressed a large amount of work in Newcastle to try and address these issues. The work that our partners are putting in to try and educate people of the danger of this, the work that council officers are putting in to try and reduce the availability in our high street and our communities, has been absolutely tremendous. I'm pleased that we're having some progress on this, I'm pleased that some of our partners are feeding back to us, that they're seeing noticeable changes and improvements. We will continue to push this work, and I'm welcoming some of the language that is coming from government now to say that they're looking at introducing a blanket ban on the availability of these substances, so at least end their legal sale. However, we want them to go further, they should be committed to an outright ban, and my hope is that in May the 7th, when we return with the Labour Government, that they'll continue that work and the ban will be brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does council agree to receive the report? Item 10's appointments, there are no appointments to report this month. Item 11, notice of motion, child exploitation. I recall on councillor Nita Loa to move the motion, seconded by councillor Huddart.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, before I start, I'd just like to say that I found councillor Lambert's remarks totally out of order. I think all parties have issues with some of their members, and we could stand here and discuss the details around Rotherham and the fact that the whole of the Labour-led council's been removed. However, what I really want to talk about is, over the past few years, oh, sorry, over the past few months, because of my role with the LGA Safe Communities Board, I have been increasingly involved in discussions about child sexual exploitation. So you should. I was going to burst into song or dance, but never mind, okay. With my background music, I have to say that I have been involved with child exploitation. And over numerous meetings and conferences, it's become apparent that this is a much wider issue than just about children, and it's not just restricted to one city or one town, it is actually nationwide, and there is still a lot more to come out. Last week, I chaired a conference in Manchester which brought together voluntary agencies, the government... the government's officers, councillors and councils to look at what lessons have been learned and what we can have put in place to raise awareness and prevent future incidents. In this motion, I deliberately only mentioned safeguarding with a small s because it is apparent it's not just children, it's physical, sexual, psychological, financial, discriminatory, abusive and neglect and failure to act that this is about. It's understanding the signs of domestic violence, bullying. And what I want in this motion is for all members of regulatory committee to be trained in safeguarding of all kinds before they serve on committees. It's actually something that the LGA has been pushing for, but it's not managed to get before this parliament and hopefully will be included in legislation in the next. We could also learn from North Yorkshire where there are taxi drivers made to undergo a course, a training course on safeguarding also. Lord Mayor, this is an extremely important issue and I believe Newcastle could be a leader in adopting and being at the forefront of this. I'm very happy to accept the amendment as a friendly amendment and support it. And just to say, there are two documents. One is called the Taxi and Private Highway Vehicle Licensing Handbook for Councillors, which is available on the LGA website. And the other one is tackling child sexual exploitation. I would suggest that all members should download them and read them, they are very, very important and we have a responsibility. It's not going to go away, we need to be more aware. And one of the good things that did come out of it when Operation Sanctuary was mentioned was just on how proactive Newcastle has been in all of this. We haven't waited for someone to come and tell us what's going on, we have been at the forefront of trying to do something and this is basically taking the step forward. So I'm quite happy to accept the amendment as it stands. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lower. councillor Hurdott.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm happy to support this motion as it deals with an important issue. And I'd like to begin with a couple of quotes. "No violence against children is justifiable. All violence against children is preventable." That's from the UN Global Study on Violence. And also, "Sexual assault against children is an urgent human rights issue and fighting it should be a political priority." And that's from the Council of Europe. Recent history, Lord Mayor, has highlighted many cases of child exploitation which have shocked and disgusted us all. The ones which have implicated local authorities and police forces in poor practice and which have led in certain cases to resignations of councillors, council staff and a police commissioner have made dreadful reading. In Rotherham, the problem had gone on for years and it was only when recently that they had some training put on for councillors and it was too little, too late. And although there were policies and procedures, they were not implemented. Councillors were in denial and I have spoken to some of them and I can say this is a fact. Ofsted reports were ignored, the role of scrutiny to challenge and ask questions was ineffectual. Repeated attempts to investigate were blocked, dismissed or buried. And Lord Mayor, we cannot have this happen again anyway. We are all corporate parents here and we all have a responsibility to safeguard and protect, which is why we all need training and we all need to develop our awareness. I have worked with the victims of sexual and physical abuse and have myself on occasions had difficulty in believing some of the stories I was told. And mostly, that's because the events that they were describing were totally outside my understanding and we can all be fooled and taken in by slick, manipulative, practised criminals. We have to learn to listen to what we're being told, to examine the evidence which will help us make decisions. And as a caution, we comment, particularly to councillor Lambert, I would remind him and other members that we had a scandal here a decade ago in a Shieldfield nursery. And it was only when a thorough, independent inquiry was held that the truth about what had been called a dismal, so previous, so-called investigation was revealed. But by then, the damage was done and lives were ruined. The medical sociologist described the aftermath of exploitation as being persistent and negative, meaning people are damaged for life and many of these victims are tainted by stigma, poor esteem, feelings of unworthiness and they have difficulty in forming relationships and many turn to self-harm, drink or drugs. The families are riddled with guilt and anger and dismay at the way they've been treated and disbelieved. We owe our young people and families a better deal. Please support the motion.
Thank you, councillor. I now call councillor Powers to move the friendly amendment, seconded by councillor Schofield.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think for all of us in this chamber, we're incredibly concerned about the impacts that these type of crimes have on our community. Rape, sexual assault are serious longstanding problems to our society, they are crimes which affect us all and the victims and perpetrators of such crimes come from all communities and all backgrounds and all areas of the city. All of us have a responsibility to tackle these issues together. I know in this chamber, I think I'm confident in saying that we stand together to condemn all those who commit such horrific crimes and we stand together to support those who are harmed and damaged by them. Lord Mayor, the amendment to the motion, as councillor Lower pointed out, is a friendly amendment. It seeks simply to take the request from the councillor Lower's motion to look at this issue and bring something forward, to commit and to bring it forward, to amend the charter tonight at this meeting, to ensure that we have a timetable when all members of regulatory committees will undergo this training and to also open it up so that all members of this chamber can take the opportunity to take part in this important training. And I would urge all members tonight that when we have this training in place, that we all take it up. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Schofield.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very pleased to support the motion, but also the amendment which goes beyond it. Because of the recommendation that all members undergo training and also that we amend the charter accordingly, I'd just like to expand on that a little. I've been chairing an inter-agency voluntary and statutory group developing a strategy that covers sexual exploitation, trafficking and sex working in the region. And from our discussions, it's clear that we do need training programmes as electric members, but they need to be broad, they need to be regulatory, but they also need to go beyond that to a positive campaign. For example, several of us are interested in how you would run a community awareness raising campaign like non-smoking and drink driving to challenge and transform cultures that normalise violence against women and girls. I'd also like to point out that safeguarding around sexual exploitation needs to focus too on adults as well as children who are sexually exploited. Women with learning disabilities, mental health problems, or those who've been damaged by abusive early parenting experiences. The other point that I think we need to really be honest about and look at in a training programme is the hidden nature of grooming for sexual exploitation. We've already heard about social media and its power. It can be a power for the good, it can be a power for evil and many of us in the chamber do not have the confidence to use it. Many wouldn't recognise how it's being used by perpetrators. And certainly, children and young people know exactly what they have to do if an adult comes into the room. Many of us wouldn't know what to do about that. I think it's necessary here to recognise that the collective exploitation that we've seen through Operation Sanctuary, and here I would like to absolutely commend the work of the inter-agency work, particularly of the police and council, in working out how we really will all work together on this. But this collective exploitation is just one, a very significant one, of the way vulnerable children and young people are targeted for abuse. There are however, as we know and as already been mentioned, other models in which victims' voices are silent or hidden. And we know, we need to know how we understand and act upon them. Look at the recent celebrity cases, as already been mentioned, absolute abuse of power by influential men, Jimmy Savile and current and other high-level celebrities, political establishment figures allegedly, we have to be careful, allegedly involved in vicious abuse of children and that included boys, and of exploitation. But most significantly, a thrust, I think, about what the alleged cover-up and removal of evidence, how do we actually stop that and recognise it? The other point I'd like to make is there is well-researched evidence that we tend to stereotype this as an issue that strangers are attacking children, but we know that children and young people suffer this form of abuse within their families across all communities and faith. How do we, as councillors, ensure that people within our constituencies who have experienced this have a voice and that this hidden violence is actually stopped? I spoke to a survivor recently who said that they needed protection from the criminal justice system, including the police, social workers and others, but they just don't want to prosecute or get their parents and families into trouble. I didn't know how to deal with that and I think it's an important question for all of us. But of particular importance in this debate is the call to end violence against women and girls by the Westminster Coalition, the Muslim Women's Association, Southall Black Sisters, the Gap Project and the Angelus Centre. They have all stressed the need to develop strategic policies that will ensure the government, national, regional, local, consider our obligations under the public sector equality duty so we comply with international human rights standards and UN obligations to ensure that issues such as mental health, suicide and self-harm affecting abused and exploited women and girls are met.
councillor Schofield, you're well over.
This includes a duty to BME women and girls, ensuring there's a specific focus within these policies on their needs, not just as an afterthought and without increasing discrimination against migrant communities. These are big questions, they must all be involved in any training that we have. That must be safe for all of us. One of the problems that people have is they don't feel safe to raise issues in our training programme. I hope we will make it so.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Forbes. That's the gavel. councillor Forbes.
Lord Mayor, like councillor Lower, I've been involved on an LGA board which has considered the issues of child sexual exploitation, not only watched with horror at what's happened around the country, but has been part of the conversation about how as a local government sector we respond to these challenges. Firstly, it's absolutely essential that victims are taken seriously, that they're listened to and that they are treated with credibility, with dignity and respect. And it is shameful that in so many cases that we've seen reported, that has not been the case. But it's also an issue for, not just for local government, but for partners in the police and for the health service too. And while Rotherham council has had some extremely bad press and some extremely difficult times as a result, I think there are still unanswered questions for South Yorkshire Police and local health services in that part of the country as there are in other parts of the country where this is being reported. Because child sex exploitation is not either caused by nor the sole responsibility of the local authority in that area, it is the responsibility of all partners to work together collectively and collaboratively to tackle it. And that also includes working with our communities. Because the long-term solution to ensuring that these kind of problems will not, do not happen again is yes, to be tough on the perpetrators of it and to throw the book at them when it comes to prosecutions, root out where we see gangs of people working together to exploit people like this. But also to ensure that nobody is placed in the position of being a victim in the first place as a result of an unequal society which objectifies women and which treats women often as commodities and seeks and gives permission often for people to exploit them. And one of the deepest, saddest things in much of these things, much of the CSE cases that we've seen around the country is that many of the young women who have been exploited have not initially seen themselves as victims. They've seen what they were doing as part of the norm. And that is something that we have to challenge by ensuring that women are seen as having equal status in our society and that young girls do not feel cast aside or outside the mainstream of society, but that everybody feels that they have a responsibility to ensure that all young people, regardless of gender, grow up safe and secure in the knowledge of who they are, how they can be safe and where to turn to for support when they need it. This, Lord Mayor, is one of the most challenging agendas that I think any of us will ever have to deal with in local government. I know I've had briefings, private briefings about some of the issues in Operation Sanctuary that quite frankly have sickened me to the stomach. And when the details emerge, when we see court cases later than this year, I know other members will be equally horrified. Let's not wait until then to make sure that we do everything that we can as members across this chamber to use our powers within our local communities and within the city council to ensure that this kind of thing never happens again in our city. Let's stand firm against it.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you very much. councillor Shepherd.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I wasn't intending to speak this evening, but an observation if I may. I believe that political rock lobbying on this issue is completely unhelpful. It divides, it creates cracks and divisions within what otherwise I believe is an entirely solid opinion that these issues must be fully investigated and prevented. Though into those small cracks are where perpetrators hide by being able to use political influence and muscle to be able to create areas in which they are able to hide and create... Excuse me, you can tell I haven't prepared this. Generally, we as politicians should not be lobbing rocks about these issues, we should be solving them and we should be part of the solution and not part of the problem. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Extremely emotive issue, councillor Shepherd, yeah. councillor Stoveley Water.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Obviously support the amendment, but I'm not quite sure that it goes far enough. We've talked a lot about corporate parenting and safeguarding clearly will provide us with the informational tools in terms of making sure that we look after our children, but it really doesn't go far enough because we should be seen to be sort of cleaner than clean. We need to be showing ourselves an example to the rest of the city and the rest of the world. And one of the things that I would like to see in a future motion is that all members of this chamber undertake an enhanced police check to make sure that we don't have any dirty linen within our ranks. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor. I now call councillor Nita Lower to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for all the comments. I'm happy to accept the amendment. I think it's a very important issue and I think the sooner we get on with it and get it in place, the better.
Thank you very much. We don't need to vote on this, we've got cross-party agreement. Yes? Thank you. Who was that? Item 12 is a notice of motion, economic position. I recall on councillor Faulkner to move the motion, seconded by councillor... Is it councillor Stone or... councillor Stone.
Lord Mayor, thank you. After that welcome unanimity on such a sensitive and critically important subject, now for something rather different and maybe we might not go down that path. Lord Mayor, spring is here and the daffodils are blooming and there's an election coming, the general election too to boot, and there couldn't be a better time in our view to have this kind of debate in the chamber. And I'm saying that really for two special reasons. One is that we on this side have suffered several years of the rewriting of history by the majority party on the question of the deficit, the economic performance of the preceding government. We've heard it before, we heard it with spades and spades at the budget meeting. Not our fault, Gov, it was all the evil bankers, it had nothing to do with us. Never mind that note that was left, that infamous note that there was no money left, it was just a joke. Well, what a sick joke that was. And when the leader of the council just an hour ago told us that he'd forgotten to mention the combined authority, it reminded me of the Labour Party Conference where Mr Miliband forgot to mention the deficit and frankly, it tells it all, doesn't it? The second reason why really we wanted to debate this tonight is because we've listened meeting after meeting about what you don't like about five years of coalition government and we don't like everything, we didn't get everything that we wanted in the coalition agreement, but we didn't win in 2010 either. And it's about time we offered a reminder of why you lost and why despite the most favorable economic circumstances for most of your 13 years and large majorities, you seriously underachieved for Britain. Now, about 1996, I had a job that involved me spending some time in the city and I remember going to one of these, what was called the Labour Party Prone Cocktail Offensive and Mollum Blessa was shadow Treasury Minister there. And I remember very, very vividly of her saying to the audience of bankers and industrialists, "You are the wealth creators, we are going to let you get on with it, we believe in the lightest touch of regulation." Well, Lord Mayor, what did that result in? That resulted in the most irresponsible, speculative lending, the credit... That resulted in the most irresponsible speculative lending, the credit bubble, the growth in executive pay, bankers' pay, bankers' bonuses, house price escalation, that's why young people can't afford to buy houses these days, all on your watch. And in this chamber, time after time, we mentioned that Vince Cable had warned you of this and it was all poo-pooed, of course. Well, Lord Mayor, my motion mentions some other things that I think you on your side of the chamber should not be proud about from the last, from the 13 years of Labour Government. Certainly, your economic and industrial policy was pretty much a disaster. You ended up with the strangest of exchange rate policies, which were incredibly damaging to British industry and exports. You did nothing to help manufacturing, particularly in this area, I might add. You did nothing to improve productivity. You didn't invest in social housing, your house building record was worse than most governments before it. And of course, the lack of investment in critical sectors of the economy was very, very painful indeed. And in other areas, I mentioned in the motion, the privatization of health services, where did it all begin? Well, I know where it began. Where did PFI come from? Well, I know where it began. And I've sat on public bodies in this region that have suffered from having to pay the costs of PFI. The development of foundation schools and academies, I remember debating them with you in this chamber, and they came on your watch. So, not a lot to be proud of in my view. And think about the broken promises, think about the broken promise to restore the link of pensions with earnings. Instead, you gave 75p on pensions one year, that was very generous. The broken promises on electoral reform, reforming the House of Lords. And like us, you have form on tuition fees. Because in 2001, you weren't going to raise them, but what did you do when you won the election? You raised them, of course. Your failure to tackle the serious underfunding of social care during the years of plenty, you have a lot to say about it now. Your failure to tackle the reform of local government funding, you have a lot to say about it now, but you have 13 years to do it. Frankly, your record was dismal. And there are a number of things that I might say, yes, like the minimum wage and one or two other things, but you can't live on that forever. And your record in transforming the British economy and British society was underwhelming, to say the very least. I want to finish on a point of accord, I hope, with Jeremy, because he made reference earlier in the evening to the absolute need to restore a system or to articulate and support a system of local government funding that is based on need. And that is why the last part of the motion asks parties to lobby in their campaigns and their manifestos to underpin that. And Jeremy, you weren't here when I said this at the last meeting, so I'll say for your benefit in particular, but I was at a meeting when Hillary Benn, the shadow local government minister, was talking about how terrible things were in local government funding and I agreed with what he said. And I asked him, well, are you going to actually tell us now what your plan is, how you will structure local government funding in a way that reflects need? And he didn't answer at all. And I said specifically, will you give a commitment that you will go back and you will create a system that restores some of the loss that areas of disadvantage have had? And he said, David, I'm sorry, I can't turn the clock back. Well, if you win the election, if you win the election, and he is the minister, I will remind him of that and I will look to people like yourselves to tell him that he was wrong and to try to support the kind of things that you have been articulating in this chamber for so long. So, Lord Mayor, the coalition has not been 100% success. The Labour Government before it, wowee.
Commissioner Picham?
One of the wonderful things selective memory is.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Picham, I forgot the second there. Yeah, she'll be keeping hold of it anyway, yes. Commissioner Picham?
My Lord Mayor, the underachievements of Labour Government are what councillor Faulkner is glowering upon. Underachievements, for example, in saving the National Health Service in vastly decreasing the number of nurses and doctors, cutting down waiting times dramatically. Underachievements in taking hundreds of thousands of children out of poverty, hundreds of thousands of children benefited from that. Underachievements in pension benefits, including the bus pass, which I, Peter, so I played some part in obtaining. Underachievements in investing hugely in social housing, not sufficiently in building new housing certainly, but in transforming the quality of the housing stock in this country. And what have the Liberal Democrats been doing over the last five years, my lord? I see them daily in the House of Lords. I see them voting proportionately more with this government than the Tory peers do. They have a higher turnout in support of the measures that this government has inflicted upon this country, including, for example, the National Health Service Bill, the abolition of the Regional Development Agency, the imposition of the bedroom tax, the demolition of legal age. And when we come back to housing, the introduction of a 70% discount on council house sales. The previous initial Tory sell-off of council housing, of course, has led to 35% of those sold off now being in the private rented sector. They have backed the government, refused to do anything about controlling the private rented sector. And when it comes to the economy, let's just recall the fact that the deficit under Labour was one quarter of the deficit of the major government over the years. And the ratio of debt to gross domestic product was greater under the previous Tory government than it was under the Labour Government. And when councillor Faulkner talks about exports, perhaps he'd just like to remind us what the state of the current balance of payments is. It is a prison. And he's presumably signing up to the myth that somehow this government of Cameron and his little yellow helpers is orange. Is transforming our economic prospects, is deforming our economic prospects. We have in this city, let's remember, eight food banks and six low-cost food centres. We have the largest food bank in the country, serving my ward and the adjoining Elsie Ward. Is that a symbol of the success of this government and its wonderful achievements? No governments are perfect. The Labour Government certainly did make mistakes. Well, I should point out that when it came to regulation, if not the Lib Dems, and I don't remember Vince Cable saying, but I'd take councillor Faulkner's word, but no doubt he did, but the Tories were demanding less regulation, more deregulation. And George Osborne, the Wizard of Number Eleven, as he now purports to be, was of course saying that we should follow the example of Ireland as an economic, case of economic miracles. What a wonderful achievement that would have been. Lord Mayor, the position of the Liberal Democrats is, as ever, one which I can only describe as giving off the odor of sanctimony. That's what we get from them. They pose as the great benefactors of British politics, always espousing the cause of those whom most need it. In practice, as I say, in vote after vote in the Commons and specifically, vote after vote in the Lords, they have backed all the evil that this government has inflicted upon this country and upon this city. They should be ashamed of themselves.
Thank you, councillor. Commissioner Ashby?
Lord Mayor, in ancient Rome, a soldier stood behind generals in their triumphal processions through the city, whispering continually in their ear, remember thou art mortal. So, on several occasions during my first year of service in this great city, I've reminded councillors, as does this motion, Labour's 2010 legacy, there is no money. I've harked on on Labour's financial incompetence, leading to expropriation of the savings of small investors in Northern Rock. The latest report shows that Northern Rock was not insolvent, it was illiquid, something the pre-Gordon Brown, remember him, Bank of England would have solved simply as the lender of last resort, without the queues and the panic. And who were the moving spirits behind Brown's failures as Chancellor and unelected Prime Minister? Step forward, Miliband and Balls, who read Ed claims will be writing a minority Labour Government's first budget. Oh dear. Where is the salvation? Where's the promised land of extra funding for local government in this unhappy outcome in May? Non-existent. We will have to carry on with current funding levels and, Balls says, the coalition's budget proposals. And it's deceiving the electorate to imply otherwise, but I note in passing that this year's outcome in Newcastle is we will have a 1.5 million pound surplus despite spending reductions. The North East is doing well. 33,000 people have found jobs in the region in the last two years. Our region's exports, we've closed spending gap, as I said in a previous address, our region's exports rose 7.2% last year and we have a positive balance of trade. We have the fourth best improvement in productivity. Is government spending in this region being cut? No, it isn't. Nine thousand five hundred and seventy-six pounds, nine five seven six, that's the number. The second highest level of per capita annual public spending in England after London, which is nine eight six six. So, there's plenty of money being spent here by the government. Maybe they just don't trust local councils at the moment to spend it wisely. And the enforced increased efficiency of Newcastle City Council might just prove them right. Will a Labour coalition loosen the purse strings for us? No, it won't. We Liberal Democrats will join in any lobbying for changes in local government funding, but in the meantime, we have to continue to live within our means, as we're doing, despite the rhetoric on the other side of the aisle.
Thank you. Commissioner Denham?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I confess to feeling slightly responsible for the motion that's been brought tonight after our last meeting. I have to say, it's an oddly simplistic affair for councillor Faulkner. As I stated last month, the expansion of the nation's public spending deficit was a requirement of the need to rescue the global financial services industry. This was a financial and not a fiscal crisis. The financial crisis was not caused by the Labour Government investing in schools, hospitals and public services, it was caused by a complex web of transnational transactions. In the United States, cheap mortgages had been sold to people on very low incomes. These loans were for properties that were at best difficult, more likely impossible to be sold if economic conditions tightened. Worse, the loans were parceled up and sold on to other banks and financial institutions in an attempt to spread the risk of default. Normally, in a loan agreement, it would make sense to insure yourself as an institution against that risk of default. But what happened in many cases was one arm of the bank sold the loan and unwittingly another arm purchased it back. It had been thought that in the event of an issue in America, such risk could be contained to the American market. However, large numbers of these loans had been sold to companies, large multinational companies such as AIG. And British banks, including the Royal Bank of Scotland, were highly exposed to these insurers. Default increased in America, impacting on the capital requirements of banks here, the first manifestation being our own Northern Rock, who relied on these financial packages to cover the capital required to meet their high interest rate mortgages they were offering. Once that dried up, they did not have access to working capital. And this lack of access to working capital brought the system to the brink of collapse, some through complex arrangements, some such as H-Boss, frankly, through poor business decision-making. I therefore stand by my point of our last meeting and flatly reject that brought by the motion tonight. On the point of regulation, both Gordon Brown and Alistair Darling have freely and openly acknowledged that the regulatory system failed with near disastrous consequences. That is not and never has been actually in dispute. However, it is a gross oversimplification to say what councillor Faulkner has brought tonight. The products and services, the bundles of debt and credit, the flows of liquidity and the operations of all these separate arms of banks work on a transnational basis that is international and complex. And this is before you discuss the still unregulated shadow banking system. It is far too simple to simply say they should have regulated the banks when faced with such a geopolitically competitive industry. I do not remember rafts of people demanding this at the time. And this brings me to another myth, that Vince Cable, based on some Keynesian principle, I assume he long since abandoned, would have stopped all this from happening. On regulation, prior to the crash, he said, and this is all recorded in the Commons' hand side, that he endorsed the liberal market approach to the regulation of financial services. No one, he said, is arguing for an increasingly severe or onerous or dirigist system of regulation. Any regulation, he said, should be done on a light-touch basis. He reiterated this in 2006 to a luncheon of the Association of Foreign Banks, stating again that he favoured light-touch regulation of the city and warned of the dangers of the current clamour for the regulation of financial products. In his book, he concedes that Britain's personal debt did not in and of itself cause the crash. The trigger for the current global financial crisis was the US mortgage market, he writes. Did he have the foresight to draw collective attention to this before publishing his book? No, I didn't, that's quite true, he told Dominic Lawson of the Sunday Times. One of the problems of being a British MP is that you do tend to get rather parochial. And I haven't been to the States for years and years, so I wouldn't claim to have any feel for what's been going on there. Now, I know I'm on a red light, so I'll jump past all the other points that I was going to point out, but councillor Faulkner can buy me a pint and I'll tell him why he's wrong if you want. I will, I will add that the deficit was actually fell year on year from 2003 to 2007, so the motion is actually factually incorrect. So, for the reasons I've outlined, I would urge colleagues to simply vote down this motion tonight. And for Labour colleagues who choose to join me in voting that way, it gives you an opportunity that has been all too rare in the past five years. You have the chance to stand up, be counted, say that the party we all joined did not wreck the economy, we transformed the country and saved it from economic collapse. Friends, stand up, walk tall and always, always defend the record. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Commissioner David Wood?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just one thing on the point that councillor Denham made about walking tall, having never been able to walk tall since the scrap, since the scrap platform shoes. But that's by the by, I mean, I realise there's an election coming up and councillor Faulkner often plays fun and games at this time of the year. But he mentioned about rewriting history and I actually start to feel a bit sympathy towards some people in the opposite benches when I saw that their leadership was lured by the attractiveness of ministerial jaguars. And I think that they are going to get the benefit of those decisions very, very shortly at the general election when they will not have the, well, some of them will not even have ministerial jaguars, they will not even have seats to go to. I just, like you say, councillor Faulkner, saying about lack of investment, whatever, I just started thinking about, you know, bus passes for elderly and disabled, free bus passes, you know, that was one, maybe that wasn't good enough, you know? The metro reinvigoration, perhaps that wasn't good enough, all the jobs that brought. The New Tynecrossing, you know, all of the money that was brought there and the jobs that were brought there, different things. I mean, on a personal basis, I saw the investment in schools, Walker Technology College was built using the, under the last administration money. But what I would like to say, often your political life is coloured by personal experiences. And just recently, I had a fortunate thing to be served by the NHS. The unfortunate thing was I had a wait 10 times as long for the operation than I would have pre-2010. 10 times as long. And, you know, so whatever pain I was suffering then. And also, I had a look for a doctor's appointment this week and because I said maybe somebody I disagreed with, but Margaret said nothing would be brave enough to disagree with it, David, but that's by the by. Went on the JP surgery and I couldn't get an appointment for less than two weeks' time, two weeks! So, you have to make an appointment to be ill when you might not be ill. But, you know, and this is, this is an example, councillor Faulkner has mentioned, the investment that the present government is making under the NHS. And I'm saying, well, where? Where is it? So, it's not there. Myths are being sort of carried on and the more times you tell a lie or a nun truth, people start to believe it. And as just then come May the 7th, people will realise in this country where they've been led down the garden path by the Tories and their supporters on the Liberal Democrat side. And hopefully, we will then have a Labour Government who will then put right many, many of the decisions that have been taken. Most certainly, the first one will be one which has affected lots of people in the more derarages and is the orphaness of the bedroom tax. The bedroom tax, Lord Mayor, is that people haven't got those houses to move to because under their watch, there was that many houses demolished in Walker, those houses aren't there anymore. And you can be quiet as well, bully boy, Mr Stone. I've seen you off once in this chamber, anyway. Lord Mayor, I think I've seen the light in you. Thank you very much for your forbearance.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Commissioner David Cook?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. At the last meeting, I conceded that councillor Faulkner was not the pantomime villain. But what, from what I've heard this evening, wishy-washy is more the character I have in mind. If we look at the motion, but paragraph one and two don't follow. Paragraph one, he says the Labour Party is responsible and paragraph two, he concedes there was a bank bailout necessarily. Now, the Institute of Fiscal Studies noted in 2007, going into the recession... Now, the Institute of Fiscal Studies noted in 2007, going into the recession, the UK had the second lowest level of debt behind Canada amongst the G7. And Nick Clegg, do you remember him, Nick Clegg? He said to simply slash public spending when we're heading into recession, there's no case for it whatsoever. Now, David Denham has already quoted what I was going to say about the saint of Vince Cable, so I'll not re-quote that. But the issue is, except to say that obviously when he said the trigger was the US mortgage market, he did in fact get that right. But if you misdiagnose the cause of what happened, you'll never put it right. And that's what's happened. And the post-election conversion of the Liberal Democrats to the policy of austerity was a major reason why the growth in the economy that was occurring under Labour was choked off. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. One more speaker and then we're back to the second. So we've got councillor Stockdale.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I don't think I've ever seen councillor Faulkner blush, but I've got a pretty good vantage point from here now. And I think after presenting this embarrassing motion tonight, he's gone a little bit beetroot round the cheeks. I think it's no wonder only 10 of your colleagues have turned up councillor Faulkner, because frankly, this is awful. I'd just like to remind you of two things. Number one, that this region is on its knees because of the wholly unnecessary austerity budget of your government. And two, the former governor of the Bank of England, Mervyn King, admitted himself that the financial crisis was not the fault of Labour. So perhaps you might take his advice and think next year when you bring silly motions like this, because it's a waste of our time. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I've still got a list of people to speak here, but we're steaming towards the guilty and I've got to call it a day somewhere. So councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In seconding councillor Faulkner's motion, I am very grateful for the opportunity to respond to councillor Denham's suggestion at last meeting and at this one, and councillor Beecham's as well, that no one, not least the Liberal Democrats, predicted the economic crash. I can advise him and councillor Seating this is not correct. I recall attending a North East Chamber of Commerce annual dinner in this very building, where the guest speaker was that great sage, Vince Cable, a fellow son of York and a fellow follower of York City Football Club. He warned in prescient terms of the vulnerability of the banks, the housing bubble and the steps he felt appropriate to combat this. He noted he had been called Cassandra and worse. Indeed, the Labour front bench Treasury team derived his warning as Lewis Skemong, looking like something out of a Hollywood disaster movie. Lord Mayor, he was right and the Labour front bench was wrong. Councillor Denham, I might want to be reminded of the words of Ed Balls in 2005, when he was welcoming light-touch, risk-based regulation. The other contributory factor, aside from lack of regulation and lack of foresight, was of course the deliberate policy of the then Chancellor Gordon Brown to throw out his golden rule. Councillor Denham alluded to disregarding the advice of Professor Keynes, but councillor Professor Keynes warned that in the boom part of the cycle, it is not good practice to run a large deficit. From 2001 onwards, Gordon Brown steadily increased spending, running up increasing deficits and disregarding his previous commitment to prudence with a purpose. By spending excessively in combination with an intensely relaxed approach to casino capitalism and bank regulation, the seeds for the recession and the spending cuts were sown. No money was left. The coalition is restoring the public finances and it is turning around the economy, and for that, they deserve great credit. I will close by recalling the words of President Obama three years ago about the hard work of the American people to get out of the recession, the recent recession in that country. He rightly likened the situation to a large limousine which had been driven into a ditch by reckless and drunken joyriders, which had been pushed out by a lot of toil and sweat and hard work by the president and by the people. Now it is back on the highway, those same joyriders were demanding the keys back. In the words of President Obama, we're not going to give you the keys back to people who can't be trusted at the wheel. Lord Mayor, that same choice has been presented to the British people in a few weeks. We have shown with great strain and great effort, we have got the car back on the road and we are going in the right direction. If the country has any sense they're not going to give you the keys back, you have shown you don't know how to drive. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And now calling councillor Faulkner to reply.
Well, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm so disappointed that colleagues on the other side didn't support, or don't seem to be willing to support the motion, despite the fact that they seem to accept large parts of it, including the failures of regulation under the previous Labour government. And of course, it's always best to be on more comfortable ground, to turn the debate on to the performance of the coalition government and not to address the issues, because you ignored many of the things in my motion, not to address the issues that seem to characterize your period of office. And the big difference, councillor Beecham and others, of course, is that for most of your 13 years, it was good times. Tax revenues were growing, GDP was growing. You did not invest wisely, you did not put money away for a rainy day, you did not regulate the economy sensibly. And if I may mention to my good friend, David Denham, my own researcher behind me, to respond to your quotations, has reminded me of the famous quotation to Gordon Brown, the question that Vince Cable put to Gordon Brown in 2013, based on a forecast, he asked for the, sorry, 2003, sorry, commenting on the forecast that a debt-fuelled consumer spending boom was being financed by unsecured mortgages and that a crash was inevitable. That's pretty clear to me, 2003. Can't deny that, you know. So let me just come back to what was the purpose of the motion, which was to highlight some of the things during your term of office which we were not particularly supportive of, or we felt that with all the resources available to you, you did not succeed. And I can do it by responding to the things that Jeremy mentioned. The bedroom tax, well, you introduced a bedroom tax for the private sector. I shall look carefully at your manifesto to see whether you're intending to repeal that as well as for council tenants, social tenants. Secondly, you referred to bus passes, they're very good, but we have suffered, as councillor Wood should know, something like 15 years of underfunding, which has put enormous pressure on resources of NEXUS and subsidies that councils have had to make to similar authorities. If you're going to introduce something, then fully fund it. You didn't do it. And that had a disadvantageous effect on the very parts of the country that we all stand up for and speak for now. Social housing, I didn't really think your record on social housing was anything great. And if you take the right to buy, you could have repealed the right to buy, but you didn't. And for most of the time, you did not allow councils access to the proceeds of right to buy to build their own. It was this administration, the Liberal Democrat administration in this city, that built the first council houses for 25 years, and you should remember that. And the deficit, I have to remind my colleagues, started growing in 2002. For the first two or three years, the Tory spending plans from 97 were maintained. The minute that it became Labour spending plans, the economy was out of kilter, the books were out of kilter, and from 2002, the deficit grew. So there we are. And you choose not to mention, because presumably you're too embarrassed, some of the other things, bankers' bonuses. Could that not have been regulated? Of course they could. You talk about levies now, where we introduced the bankers' levy, PFI, you didn't mention. The money supply, house prices, you didn't mention anything that embarrasses you. I know you're embarrassed and frankly, you should be.
Thank you. councillor to vote on the motion. The motion falls. Item 13. Notes of motion, boundary review. I would call on councillor Faulkner to move the motion, seconded by councillor Sheppard. councillor Faulkner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you again. Colleagues, this motion is in three parts, really, three sections to it. The first refers to a letter that the Local Government Boundary Commission for England wrote to the city council last September, informing us that Newcastle will be part of its upcoming electoral review programme because we meet the intervention criteria because of numbers of electors getting out of kilter in certain wards. I really want to know, and I hope somebody will answer during this debate, why this has not been made public, why it has not been brought to Constitutional Committee, which would be the proper way of dealing with it, and why it seems simply to have been shelved. Maybe it will emerge strangely after the election, I don't know. But I'm looking for some explanation as to what the council has done or not done about this particular, rather important it seems to me, letter. Second part of the motion is about pointing out the way in which Newcastle is out of kilter in terms of ratio of population to the number of elected members, and expressing the view that if we are to have a boundary commission review, now would be a good time for us to ask the commission for that to be a wider one and for us to get involved in a consultation, a wide consultation locally about that. Now, back in 2003, I remember colleagues who were here at the time on this side of the chamber proposed a reduction in the number of councillors. When the 2004 reorganisation came along, there was no such reduction. There are certain imperatives now about this. First of all, I would suggest to you that there is the opportunity for an important saving by reducing the number of councillors. Secondly, we will have the opportunity by redrawing the boundaries to realign some of the wards with what I've called natural local communities. You know as well as I do that some of them really are not now, and the fewer wards, the more chance there is of associating communities with each other in a more sensible kind of way. My own wards, for example, splits, I've got half of Kenton, North Kenton, the other half is in Kenton Ward, doesn't make any sense really. So there is an opportunity to save some money, to right a wrong, to put us in order with other people. And a way I'd like to suggest too, that the way in which this council is run, you don't actually need us all. You don't need us all. This council is run in a way that marginalises most councillors in the chamber. When leader and cabinet came along, we knew that most backbenchers on both sides would have a diminished role, and so has been the case. And I've twice returned to the committee system, I know some of your members privately support that, but of course you voted against it. And that would give councillors a say in making policy in this city, which clearly they don't have now. And try as we do to make scrutiny work, the truth is that it's after the event, it's largely after the horse is bolted, and you make it worse by your system of delegated decisions to cabinet members, subcommittees of cabinet that we don't know about, that are served by officers, but we never find out what's happening. And of course, little representation now by councillors on external bodies, which I always felt was part of our legitimate role. So actually, you don't use the skills and experience of councillors, in my humble opinion, and frankly, you don't need as many of us. And the third part of the motion really is about changing to all-up elections. And there was a part of the motion which, nobody's fault really, actually got missed off in transposition. So I'll just read it out. And it says that if we move to all-up elections, it saves the city council at least £500,000 over the electoral cycle, that's what was given, as well as increasing voter engagement and turnout. We know fine well from evidence that all-up elections produce at least a 5% increased turnout on election in parts. And if we put the election in a year that was not co-terminus with a general election or a European Parliament election, it would actually give an opportunity for a much more meaningful debate about the future of the city. Because actually what happens when there's another election on, people are not talking about us, the city, its priorities, its needs, they're talking about who's going to run the government, who's going to be in the European Parliament. So we would have a chance with an all-up election to select a period in the cycle where we could have a debate that was just about this city and whose policies are the best for this city. And some metropolitan councils, you can't just say, no, no, it's not allowed. In these days of localism, if you petition, you will have the opportunity to change your structure if you so wish, and some metropolitan councils have done it. So my final bit of the motion was going to be this, and I'll read it out, but it is simply my hope and aspiration that you might request cabinet to take steps to begin a full consultation on the pros and cons of a change of this nature, and if it's supported, then to begin the process needed to give effect to it. I think it's time, it saves money, it's better for democracy, it uses those skills of councillors a little bit better because we have, hopefully, wider roles to perform, and certainly what we have now isn't working.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Sheppard.
I'd like to second the motion, Lord Mayor, and reserve the right to speak.
Thank you. councillor Forbes.
Lord Mayor, it's somewhat distressing to see councillor Faulkner continuing to shred what remains of his political credibility in the council chamber. He and I share a good friend who said to me the other day that she was really concerned that his good standing and good-natured position in the city was really being damaged by some of the incredulous political positions that he was starting to take. I know they don't have any other talent on that side of the chamber, I know he's the only person that they have to rely on to speak, but come on, David, putting forward intellectually inconsistent motions like this, complaining on the one hand about concentration of powers under the cabinet system, and then on the other hand, saying that we need to reduce the numbers of councillors, it just doesn't add up. You are not being consistent, you're not thinking these things through. Of course, we know the real reason why the Lib Dems want boundary review, it's because they think they'll win more seats as a result. This is what David Faulkner said in 2011. He said, we won in 2004 because of changes toward boundaries. That's their political strategy. They know they can't win under the current system, so they want to rig the system to gerrymander it in their favour. Well, we're not going to put up with that. Now, if you look at the independent electoral registration results, it's true that on the original register, we triggered the boundary review to come and look at Newcastle. But independent electoral registration has changed the picture. And in fact, there is no longer a single ward in the city which would trigger a review because every ward is now within the tolerance required by the Boundary Commission. And I am due to meet with the Boundary Commission in a couple of weeks' time alongside the chief executive to talk about what the way forward might be. But I'll tell you, Lord Mayor and colleagues, that we won't put forward a proposal that hasn't been consulted on by people in this city. The arrogance of the party opposite to simply put something in a motion and say that's the result we should end up with, without any conversation with communities in the city, without any conversation about what natural boundaries might look like, simply plucking a number out of thin air and pushing it forward because it's a populist position to take. This is quite arrogant and disgraceful behaviour by the Lib Dems. And the cat is out of the bag. They're doing this purely for political advantage because they think that this is one of the ways that they'll continue to cause trouble within the city. Well, people don't fall for that. People know that their policies are a pile of steaming something. People know that they're going to be really punished by the electorate in the forthcoming elections. People know that the Lib Dems are a finished party in the city. And I simply ask the question, if they were in power for seven years, why didn't they institute anything then? They had their chance, they blew it. And it's time, Lord Mayor, that we got on with a business, a serious business of delivering for communities in the city, rather than being sidetracked by councillor Faulkner's increasingly bizarre political obsessions like we're being tonight.
Thank you, councillor.
Why does she be technically not disclose this to the rest of the council? That's an important question, a very important question, Lord Mayor.
councillor Forbes, did you wish to respond to that or not?
No.
councillor Bartlett.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This evening, we have had from the Liberal Democrats them trying to hold on to any sort of policies coming up to this next election. We've had a motion which talks about a Labour government five years ago, and it talks about a process, about boundary review, where there is a due process of doing things. So as they have seen this letter, it was quite clear that the next steps on that letter was there'd be a meeting between the chief executive and the leader and the Boundary Commission. And then once that has happened, it will come in due process to Constitutional Committee. So what is in the motion is very valid in two or three months' time, and that should be debated and quite rightly so. And all of the issues that councillor Faulkner's raised relating to the number of councillors and ward boundaries, personally, that's what we should always be looking at and looking at in a proper due process. But of course, what they have done is they've brought this motion just before the election time, because they need to put something in a focus, because they haven't got anything else to put in a focus, because they can't do anything on their record, because they've had five years of Tory stooges and they simply have to put something in there to their local residents to imply that they've actually got something to say. The reality is, they haven't. They haven't got it, Lord Mayor. They are trying to use due process within this council and trying to chase things forward before the 7th of May. If we didn't have an election about in a few weeks' time, this motion wouldn't be here because there was nothing to say at this time. It will come in due process. The leader has said exactly what that has said, they're going to meet in two weeks' time, end of. And yet, they still bring it here to this council chamber because they have nothing to say, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Cook.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, David, you wrote a letter to the Chronicle on this very subject some time ago when you complained that you'd had no answers to that question last year when you'd asked it. In actual fact, I stood up in this In actual fact, I stood up in this chamber and gave you some answers, and you'll forgive me if I give at least some of them the same ones again. Councillors' work, of course, includes more than the work in wards, and it does include work in committees, and I disagree with you that our committees are non-functional, as you implied. I think the planning committee, the scrutiny committee, licensing and regulation appeals and so on, are very important committees which backbenchers take part in. And you know how difficult it is sometimes to fill these committees, to get people to work on them, and it's where the backbenchers do the non-executive work. Now, it's all right for old codgers like you and me, David, but representative democracy is supposed to be inclusive, and on this side of the chamber, we're trying to encourage younger members to put themselves forward for election. And with some, well, it's obviously not succeeding, is it? But we are trying. But it will work. And the implications of having a smaller and younger council is there will inevitably a demand for committee meetings and other meetings to be held in the evenings, as there already is. And I don't think you've factored in the cost of officer time in doing that into your calculations. I also think it's a rather curious sentence in there, that councillors regret something that council hasn't been doing, but we'll leave that one aside. So I think this motion should be rejected.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hardman?
I don't take many opportunities to speak in the chamber, and as this is my last meeting, I'm sad to say, this will be my last opportunity to speak probably. I just wanted to say that I felt it was a bit, well, it wasn't a surprise really to me that you wanted to reduce the number of members down to 60, because if the experience of South Cheshmund residents of how hardworking Liberal councillors are is what you expect of councillors, then I'm not surprised you think we can afford to reduce the numbers down. Because actually, they were incredibly lazy, and they got voted out because they were so lazy, and they didn't do the work. Now, the rest of us actually work our socks off and find that we struggle to find the time to deliver what's actually needed to run the council with 78 councillors. If you reduced it down, you will be reducing the council down to only those who are retired, who have that spare time. That's not proper democracy, and that's not a proper way of running a council. You've got to have, you've got to be joking that you think this is a reasonable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sheppard?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. It is in fact exactly the right time to be discussing this, we've just heard about the LDF, and it is right and proper that the city changes and adapts to the communities which Leader of Council describes, new communities which are being developed. We had a boundary review in 2004 to adapt to these changes as the city grows, and we should do so again. I have explained the City Council to a number of people, including the Vice Chancellor at Newcastle when he first arrived, and he was amazed to think that there were 78 people involved in the City Council. A slimming down of the council would in fact, as David has suggested, save us many thousands of pounds. All-up elections, as we've heard, can lead to a saving of £500,000, it can lead to a better debate amongst the electorate and a stronger administration. I particularly urge colleagues to support this matter, as it will give us a slimmed-down, much more efficient council that will save us money, which will be elected four times a year, sorry, every four years, four, every four years, and give us a much more efficient organisation. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, thank you. Councillor Bartlett, you have the right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. What a nightmare, four elections we've had. But actually, there is a serious point there about those authorities that do have all-up elections, and I notice that nobody's really addressed that particular part of the motion, which is a shame, because I'd like to hear the arguments against it, because I think there are powerful arguments for it. And one of the arguments is actually that whichever party wins, it then has time to implement its policies. Instead of the system that we're in, not just this council, of course, in all councils that have elections by thirds, is that by the time you've had your summer break after the election, you've got one eye to the next election and how things play out. And I do think that we could have a much more collaborative, a better long-term planned approach if we had administrations that knew that they had four years in office instead of having an election to fight pretty much every year. Well, that's my view, and I know, because I've spoken to one or two of your members informally, I know that some of you hold that view as well, but you're probably whipped to vote against my opinion on it, which is a shame. The leader chose not to respond to the point about the letter, councillor Bartlett did. It seems to me that a letter like that, just to report to Constitutional Committee, or to assume that the only people interested in this, let's keep it secret, let's keep it with a few people, the generality, the members, the opposition, the others, we'll not trouble them about this thought, we'll fix it up, and then we'll bring together a solution that we know we can get through our group. What an arrogant way of dealing with things, what utter arrogance from the leader of the council. It doesn't wash, Nick, it really doesn't wash. On the point about this motion just coming up now, in the last two years, I refer to exactly the same points in our budget contributions, and I know you don't listen, but at least give us the credit of being consistent here. We've done it, we've mentioned it several, several times in the past. On the thing working out to our advantage, well, actually, I don't think it will, because the largest wards at the moment, the largest wards are Labour wards like Benwell, Scotrill, it would work out to your advantage. So there you are, all you want to do is make a cheap personal jive at me, to say I'm doing these things for personal advantage, when actually, the opposite is true. It was true in 2004, was one of the reasons we won. You would have boundaries which were extremely favourable to you. All the growth was in the parts of the city that were represented by Liberal Democrats, and all of the rotten boroughs, the depopulating areas were represented by Labour, and it was right and proper that that review took place. And we advantage, we advantage, you know what I mean historically by the term rotten borough, you know exactly what I mean by it. You know exactly what I mean by it.
Councillor Faulkner apologised for his thoughts, as he's just being...
I will certainly not apologise for using a term that you know fine well, and stop, stop playing the game, Nick. Now, look, you know exactly the point I'm making, in 2004, we were the beneficiaries because fairness was brought into the system. We now offer you the opportunity to bring fairness back into the system, and you're turning it down. And when you say that we're presuming to say what the outcome is, the motion asks you to consider, to consider, and then to go and consult widely on it. So give me the credit for reading the motion properly, instead of putting out all this words into my mouth that you seem to find easy to challenge. And those champions of democracy, like yourself, Nick, from what you said in this chamber a few months ago, are really quite prepared to have an imposed super-region mayor if that suits everybody, and by gum, I bet your hat is in the ring.
Councillor to vote on the motion. The motion falls. It is now 8.30, it's after 8.30, and so the guillotine has fallen. I will now deal with the main business on the agenda as follows. I will call each item on the agenda and invite the member in whose name it stands, whether they wanted to be a) dealt with and put to the vote without discussion, or b) postponed to the next ordinary meeting of the council.
I spent 20 minutes, quite frankly, discussing a lot of twaddle, utterly irrelevant to the needs of the city, and we're getting on to two very, very important issues about basically trying to engage people in this city, and rather being sidetracked and digressed by a lot of absolute...
Councillor Lambert, the guillotine's fallen.
No relevance except to us...
The guillotine's fallen, councillor Lambert, you need to decide whether to...
So I want to basically propose this motion, I'd like people to support.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's going to be done now.
No, 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 the guillotine's fallen, and that's final. Now you've got a choice. Do you put it to the vote?
I think this motion needs to be discussed.
It did not be discussed.
We'll go so around.
Do you put it to the vote?
Move to the vote or...
Councillor Lambert, it's up to you to put the vote or postpone the next ordinary meeting of the council. You've got two choices.
The original motion, which is supported by councillor Powers.
Right.
The original motion.
Yeah. Right. It's moved by councillor Lambert and is seconded by councillor Powers. Yes?
May I, we allow to post an amendment?
Yes, indeed. Councillor Kitting, you approve an amendment, and councillor Ashby, seconded.
May I move the amendment? If councillor Lambert wants to abolish individual registration, we will vote against.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. Right, so now, we're going to vote on the amendment. This is councillor Kitting's amendment we're voting on.
No, I don't accept the amendment.
No, no, we're voting on the amendment. So the amendment falls. We now vote on the original motion. The motion's carried. Right, item 15, notes of compulsory voting, and this is by councillor Ashby. Did you wish to vote or defer councillor Ashby?
Lord Mayor, as we voted on the previous motion, and this is not unrelated, please can we vote on this one?
You vote on, yeah. And you have a second on this?
Seconded, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Allen? Yes. So we're voting on the motion. The motion falls. Before the close of the meeting, I remind members to remove all meeting papers from their seats and recycle any unwanted papers at the back of the chamber. I have now formally closed the meeting. Thank you. Come on. Come on. Oh, come on. Thanks.